Good morning, everybody. Welcome to our regular meeting for the Lake County Board of Supervisors. Today is May 14th, 2024. We will begin today with a moment of silence. And I did not check in with my colleagues. Does anyone have a moment of silence?
No.
All right. So none of us have a moment of silence today. Just in tune with some of the proclamations that we have. We do have Memorial Day coming up soon. And I would like to remember those who put their lives on the lines to protect our freedoms, to protect what this country reveres, which is our Constitution and the freedoms that we have. And so I'd love to make sure and remember all of them and the impacts that they've had on us and their families and friends. Supervisor Pesci, would you please lead us in the pledge?
I'd like allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let's move on to our next item. Are there any extra items that are not on the posted agenda?
No, there are not.
Anything from board members? All right, seeing none, let's go ahead and move on to our consent agenda. Is there any items that anyone wishes to pull from the consent agenda on the board? All right, I'm going to pull item 511 just for quick clarification. And then let's go ahead and open it up for the public. I see no hands in Zoom for pulling an item from the consent agenda and no one approaching the podium. So let's go ahead and bring it back for action.
We've to approve the consent agenda as posted with the exception of 5.11.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. Go on to our 9:02 AM item, public input. Anyone wish to express anything related to Lake County that is not on our agenda today? You have three minutes. Please come on up. I see no hands in Zoom and no one running to the microphone. So we're going to move on to pet of the week, our 9:03 AM item. And we have Officer Murray with a lapdog.
Oh, my God. I just can't.
Hi, I'm Officer Kopus with Lake County Animal Care Control. I have also brought Officer Murray. Today, we have brought a three to four month old shepherd hound pit mix named Ruby. She's very mellow for a puppy. She would love any kind of home. She has perfect temperament, I would think. She's still learning the leash and she has a lot to do with a lot of puppiness. She will be great in any home, any energetic home, mellow home, pretty, pretty good. And we also brought Toby over here. He's about a six month old orange tabby cat. He came to us as a stray. He's also would be good in any home, very kitten-like, but very loving. I don't know if you guys can hear him right now, but he's purring pretty loud. He's very, very sweet, very, very mellow. If you'd like to see him or any of our other animals, we are located at 4949 Hellbush Drive, or you guys can give us a call at 707-263-0278. She's just super loving. Would you guys like to pet any of them?
We have a yes from Megan Morgan in the back. Officer Kopus, Officer Murray, thank you so much. What a treat. That's a cute dog. Going to move on to our 9:04 AM item, presentation of proclamation designating May 15th, 2024 as California Peace Officers Memorial Day and May 12th through 18th, 2024 as National Police Week in Lake County. Please come on up. Almost felt like it was a swearing in ceremony. There's so many. You guys want to come up? Come on up. Don't be shy. Thank you so much for all being here. So here we have a proclamation designating May 15th, 2024 as California Peace Officers Memorial Day and May 12th through 18th, 2024 as National Police Week in Lake County. Whereas of all the promises America offers, none is more precious and more elusive than the right to be free from crime and violence. And whereas the dedicated men and women who have chosen law enforcement as a career face extraordinary risk and danger in preserving our freedom and security. And whereas during the week of May 12th through 18th, 2024, National Police Week is observed throughout the nation to recognize the hazardous work, serious responsibilities, and our strong commitment to our nation's peace officers. And whereas in conjunction with important observance, May 15th will be observed as California Peace Officers Memorial Day in commemoration of those noble officers who have tragically sacrificed their lives in the line of duty. And whereas these special observances provide all Californians with the opportunity to appreciate the heroic men and women who have dedicated their lives to preserving public safety. Now therefore, be it proclaimed, the Board of Supervisors of the County of Lake formally designates May 15th, 2024 as California Peace Officers Memorial Day in Lake County in the week of May 12th through 18th, 2024 as National Police Week in Lake County and encourages all citizens to remember those individuals who gave their lives for our safety and express appreciation to those who continue to dedicate themselves to making California a safer place in which to live, passed and adopted this 14th day of May, 2024.
Good morning. I'm Rob Alley, County Sheriff. Thank you, Supervisor Sabati, and thank you for the board for this proclamation. I feel like I've been up here quite a bit lately with proclamations. In fact, Chief Monfran's asked me if I have one every week. So we've had Correctional Officers Week, Public Safety Dispatcher, now Peace Officer Memorial, and it's been an honor to accept every one of them from you. It kind of goes to show how many aspects there are to law enforcement and it takes everyone doing their job to work. So thank you. It gives me an opportunity to thank my whole department, all the departments here, from clerical staff to peace officer. No one's more important than the other. It takes everybody to make it work. As far as being more specific for Peace Officer Memorial, I've given talks about this quite a bit, and it's difficult every time. And how do you put it into words? And what do you say? And there's really not a lot. You can't encompass everything, certainly not in a few minutes. So for me, it kind of boils down to something simple, kind of a simple guy. That is just thanks. I have so much thanks for the men and women who do these jobs. They put their lives on the line for us to live better lives, to live safer lives, to live lives more free. I don't say that just as the sheriff or just because I'm in law enforcement. I won't always be, but I'll always be a citizen here and always be grateful for what they do. Also thankful, so thankful to be in this county, to have worked for a couple of these departments, but thankful for the citizens we have as well. By and large, we do have a lot of people in this county who are supportive of law enforcement, who do appreciate what we do, who do understand the sacrifices, and it makes it worthwhile for us, I think. So that's really it, just a thank you to the men and women doing the job, those who will do it in the future, those who have done it in the past, and to those citizens who appreciate what they do. So thank you.
I don't know that I can say better words than what we're just said. All I know is it's highly appreciated. There's a reason that we call 911. We need help. And someone comes in rushing to try and provide that help, whether it's for safety, whether it's for support, there's all kinds of reasons to call. And the unfortunate fact is that when I go to work, I know my family's not worried that I might not come home. And I think that's one of the reasons that we have to be aware of the sacrifices that our men and women of law enforcement, peace officers, commit to every single day is because there is that possibility. And we need to do everything we can to make sure everyone goes home every single night and continues to do the work they do in our community. It's not just about public safety. It's about the economy. If I want to run a business and I can't predict that there's going to be crime in my area and that my business is going to be safe, it's hard for me to have a business in this community. It covers so much more than just overall public safety. It has impact all over our communities. Very thankful for the hard work and the commitment that you all have to this community. Anyone else?
Yeah. So I just wanted to, last week I got to do the proclamation for corrections. And so I'm glad to see this here this week as a standalone as well. Appreciate, I really do appreciate all the work that the department has been doing. We've been working together well on numerous things. I am getting a lot of good feedback from the municipal advisory committees as well about how they've been working with or how they've been seeing and the difference in a lot of these and the roadmap, task force, all that stuff. And so it's all the work that you all put in, all of the work that you've been willing to do the best you can. I know in RRC RC, when I talk with other counties and they talk about how long it takes, and I'm like, well, we're not that, we're not, it doesn't take us an hour, hour and a half or two hours. You know, we're at least 45 minutes or whatever. So I see, you know, that on our level, we get to see that it's very difficult in other places and we don't have it as bad. But everything can always be better, but at the same time, it makes me feel good that at least we have a group that tries and not just tries, but does. And also we're a little, we're a little better off than some of these other counties. So, yeah.
I think that's just a testament to our staff and who we have living here and who's chosen to serve our community. So thank you so much for all that you do.
Yeah, same for me. Thank you. That's all I got to say. You said the best word. Thank you very much for everything you guys do.
And all I have to add is this group looks so cohesive and together, and the only thing I think is missing is Chief Monfran's up here for the photo op. So I owe that spirit of collegiality. So thank you.
Next up, our 9:06 AM item, presentation of proclamation designating May 2024 as Maternal Mental Health Awareness Month in Lake County. Please come on up.
Oh, there you are.
Yeah, come on up.
Board of Supervisors, County of Lake, State of California, proclamation designating the month of May 2024 as Maternal Mental Health Awareness Month in Lake County. Whereas maternal mental health is an issue of great concern to Lake County's parents, families, healthcare providers, and our community at large. And whereas struggles with mental health can affect any mother, regardless of age, race, or income level. And whereas Black, Indigenous, and people of color who are mothers experience struggles with their mental health at higher rates than their white counterparts. And whereas many women are not adequately informed, screened, or treated for pregnancy and postpartum mood and anxiety disorders. And whereas heightened awareness and stigma reduction are essential for approving outcomes for mothers, children, families, and communities. And whereas pregnancy and postpartum mood and anxiety disorders are highly treatable through therapeutic intervention, community-based support services, and medication. And whereas health service providers and community support systems must be able to identify risk factors and symptoms in order to provide prompt diagnosis, treatment, and support services that enable full and speedy recovery. And whereas Motherwise is a countywide nonprofit that provides respectful, informative, and judgment-free support to Lake County mothers and caregivers so that maternal health issues are de-stigmatized and all aspects of motherhood are honored. They conduct mental health screenings, offer workshops, operate a donation closet of baby and maternity items, provide car seats to families in need, and more. All of these services are free, and they support thousands of Lake County moms a year. Motherwise supports all of the grandmothers, daughters, aunties, sisters, and mothers of Lake County coming together in support of Maternal Mental Health Month. Maternal mental health now leads to stronger families and communities tomorrow. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Lake does hereby designate the month of May 2024 as Maternal Mental Health Awareness Month in Lake County and does commend this observance to all citizens, passed and adopted this 14th day of May, 2024. And living in a remote community like this, it's even more important to have this community and connectivity because it's so easily isolating. And I learned that as a mom or a new mom who was older and didn't have a lot of friends when we moved back here. And if it weren't for these small meetups and gatherings that were not through Motherwise at the time, but they were monthly meetups with moms, we had a mommy's brunch every month. And, you know, having that community and people to connect with is absolutely just critical. It's a big transition that happens, and sometimes when you're older and there's a loss of your life before, and you have to grieve that loss when you're moving into a new era. So I really just appreciate all that you're doing and going to the Motherwise event at The Ripe Choice was just one of the most beautiful things. We had some staff that was there, moms of all ages, kind of just took some time for themselves, allowed themselves to be pampered. There were a lot of donations, a lot of support for these types of events, and they're just really critical because we've got to have the healthy moms and babies to really have that strength in our community. So thank you so much for all that you do.
Thank you very much. My name is Sabrina Andrus. I'm the executive director of Motherwise, and with me are a host of our stakeholders and board members and staff. We just want to thank the board for taking the time to say these words out loud because as many of us know, and some of you may not, the number one support, the number one thing you can do to support moms in crisis and crisis sort of across the spectrum is let them know that they're not alone and that there is community and that there's support out there. We provide that. A host of agencies and nonprofits in this county provide that. And we know that when we have strong mamas, we have much stronger families and communities. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Well, thank you so much. Let's get our picture.
Next is our 9:08 AM item, 6.5, presentation of proclamation designating the month of May 2024 as National Foster Care Month in Lake County. Please come on up. Thank you all. This is a proclamation designating the month of May 2024 as National Foster Care Month in Lake County. Whereas, Lake County Board of Supervisors recognizes the importance of providing children safe, healthy, and loving homes when they are unable to remain in the home of their biological family. And whereas, there are 391,098 children in the United States in foster care. And whereas, there are 43,633 children in California in foster care. And whereas, there are 72 children in the County of Lake who are living in the home of a caregiver. And whereas, to help these children have a healthy, loving, and stable home environment where they can thrive and feel connected to a community that cares for them and celebrate and support the resources, to resource families that provide these critical homes in our county. And whereas, the county is acknowledging National Foster Care Month to raise awareness about the need for more resource families for local children. And whereas, this effort, along with similar celebrations in all 50 states, will offer children the chance to live with healthy, loving, and stable resource families when they cannot live with their birth families and encourage other dedicated individuals to make a powerful difference in the lives of a child through resource family care. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Lake County Board of Supervisors is wholeheartedly proclaiming the month of May 2024 as National Foster Care Month in Lake County and in doing so urges all citizens to join in a national effort to raise awareness about the importance of foster care and resource family care, passed and adopted this 14th day of May, 2024.
Hi, my name is Amber Davis. I'm the Deputy Social Services Director for Child Welfare Services. And I'd like to thank the board today for agreeing to sign this proclamation because it's really important. There aren't any caregivers here today, but all of us here who are, support them in kind. I've lived here for six years, and I have met a myriad of people in a variety of capacities that are here doing whatever they can to make our community a better place. But I just want to take this one moment for us to pause and think about the fact that our caregivers and foster parents, they choose to be a caregiver. It's not an obligation. It's not mandatory. It's not a regulation. They step forward in addition to their own home, their own errands, their own, everything that they're having to do for their own life, and they say, yes, I will go through this process to take in a child that may or may not be related to me because I think that's important. And honestly, I think that is amazing. I am awestruck every time I think about their capacity to give these children and youth what they need while their families are getting healthy. So I would just like to remind all of those who are caregivers that we who work in these services know your importance. We know you are pillars to our community, and thank you for being an inspiration.
So I want to say that I'm reminded at this moment of our prior colleague, Tina Scott, who was a true leader and inspiration to the community in opening up her home to so many foster children. And we also just passed in our consent agenda item, a report that provided some statistics of the length of time it takes for some of these children to find homes. And I think that this proclamation is connected to that in the sense of the need to really look for those homes that can be made available for the children that are in need. It is unfortunate how many are still in need, but there are so many homes that could be made available. And so I think this proclamation is powerful. It's needed. We need to embrace the fact that these children need a stable place for them to call home so that they can thrive in their lives. So really thinking of our prior colleague, who I think was a true inspiration to so many in our community.
I'd just like to add a couple of words. Thank you for calling out the importance of resource families. But I want to highlight and celebrate and lift up our hardworking CWS workers, social workers, visitation specialists, office assistants, staff service analysts. If you are considering being a resource family, know this, you will be supported well. You will have professional staff paying attention all along the way, whether it's juvenile dependency, juvenile probation. The people up here are highly motivated and highly trained to do what I think is among the most difficult work possible. And I just want to share that. You don't see it. Typically, these processes are not meant for public eyes, for good reason. But just for my limited time in the CWS, I was impressed constantly, daily, and surprised by the commitment of my coworkers, the things I knew and the things I wasn't entitled to know about. So as you celebrate your resource families and look for new families to engage, also take a moment to do some self-care and pat yourselves on the back for a job so necessary and so well done. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you all for being here. My name is Casey. I'm the Resource Family Approval Supervisor. I've been the supervisor for about a year, and I wanted to thank all of you for being here, especially my staff, Amber and Elizabeth. We are small but mighty here in our community. We have about 60 resource family homes here that just the three of us with our supervisors and program managers and deputy directors that we oversee and support. So I just wanted to say thank you to them for always answering the phone, always supporting them, and also to our people that we collaborate with, probation, behavioral health. It's really important. So we appreciate all of you, and thank you very much to my staff and all the support that we get from the community.
One last thing. You know, just want to say that stepping up to be a foster parent, it just gives you an opportunity for generational change. These children are just never choose to be foster children, and stepping up and making that sacrifice in your life. When you talk about making generational change, there's an opportunity there for everyone when you step up for these children to change their course of their lives. So just want to say thank you to everybody who does that. Thank you for bringing up our former supervisor, Tina Scott. We know the tremendous work she did in that field, but I want to thank everybody who does that because our most important assets are our children, and someone stepping up and giving their life to these children in the middle of their lives, because that's when it happens. You know, in the middle of the night, a family member or someone else needs that help and someone to be there for them, it's just critical. So I just want to thank everybody for that and continue to work. And there's plenty of opportunities if you want to be a foster parent. I imagine there's a phone number, or you guys gave that out already, who they could reach out to. If someone's watching it today, reach out if you're interested in it.
It's 707-263-0235.
Is it 262?
Yeah.
262.
Right. Now photo op.
That's what I do.
I'm
High school. You know, we did this proclamation at Lakeport City Council last week, and you know what you did? You ghosted your mom. You ghosted your mom. So I'm going to ask you to just wait till the proclamation is over. Don't have to say anything. We're going to hang out a little bit. And this is Jennifer, and this is Marlene, right? Did I pronounce it right? All right. Here we're going to read some words on very fancy paper. This is a proclamation designating May 4th through 11th, 2024 as National Osteogenesis Imperfecta, OI, Awareness Week in Lake County. And so first off, apologies. We should have done this last week. We were stacking up the procs. We did two hours, so thank you for coming back. Whereas, osteogenesis imperfecta, OI, is a genetic bone disorder characterized by fragile bones that break easily. It is also known as brittle bone disease. A person born with OI is affected throughout his or her lifetime. And whereas, there are many different types of OI with symptoms that range from mild to life-threatening, with variable clinical features such as fracture frequency, muscle strength, or extraskeletal problems affecting vision, hearing, or other body organs and functions. And whereas, because there is no cure for OI, treatment focuses on minimizing fractures, the surgical correction of deformity, reducing bone fragility, maximizing mobility, and independent function. And whereas, it is estimated that approximately 25,000 to 50,000 people in the United States have OI, and with good medical treatment and supportive care, the majority of people lead healthy, productive lives with an average lifespan. And whereas, increased funding is needed for education and research to help find more effective treatments. And whereas, the Osteogenesis Imperfecta Foundation, a voluntary national health organization, strives to improve the quality of life for people with osteogenesis imperfecta by increasing awareness of this rare disease among the public, media, government, and medical communities. Now therefore, this is the big ending. Be it proclaimed that the Lake County Board of Supervisors does hereby designate May 4th through 11th, 2024, and this week too, why not, as National Osteogenesis Imperfecta Awareness Week in Lake County, passed and adopted this 14th day of May 2024. Now we clap.
(applause)
Jennifer, proud mom, any words?
Yeah, I thought that it would be a disservice of me as a parent to not get out there and advocate for my child. She may be one of the only people in the county that has OI, and navigating, you know, with her needs all these 18 years has been pretty difficult. There's not a lot of awareness and knowledge about OI in this community, and therefore it sometimes, there seems to be a lacking in inclusivity with her being able to go about functioning within the community and its services, you know, the best that she could possibly be doing. Up until the sidewalks or the main street got redone, there was many businesses that were not handicap accessible. And also, further, besides just being in the wheelchair, the fragile nature of her bones is something that a lot of people don't consider when they think of someone in a wheelchair, that they can get hurt easily. The school has had to do lots of repairs as she was getting, you know, into middle school and into high school. They had to adapt different ways for her to get around the playground and the school campus and whatnot. And there's still a lot that needs to be done. The Social Security Department recognizes as type 2 as being, I guess exempt to automatically get benefits, but kids that are, people that are born with type 2, they don't live longer than a couple weeks of age. So I think that's kind of where awareness is kind of missed. What else was I going to say? I do think, though, that the knowledge and awareness has gotten better. In M. Night Shyamalan, I'm not sure if I'm saying that right, his movie Unbreakable, Samuel L. Jackson's character in that movie is described as having type 3 OI, and he didn't demonstrate any of the characteristics of having type 3. But then his, I guess, the trilogy movies, in the third movie Glass, there was a correction, and he said that he had type 1, which is more along the lines of what his character showed throughout that movie. But yeah, OI is a rare disease, and there's a lot that needs to be done and more awareness that needs to be made. And yeah, and that's.
Thank you. Do you have anything you would like to say, Marlene? No? But you're patient, and you're not ghosting me. I appreciate that so much. Did you see, I think last time we spoke, you mentioned the words companion animal. Did you see the pets that were in here? They were really sweet. Hint, hint, mom. Okay, Ann, can you show off your lovely fingernails? Those are beautiful. But you can't do a, okay, nothing broke, right? High five. Excellent. All right. Thank you.
Oh, nice. Sure can thank you.
Thank you very much. And move on to our 9:12 a.m. item, Presentation of Proclamation Designating the Week of May 18th through 24th, 2024 as National Safe Boating Week in Lake County. Please come on up. I believe we might have some Marine Patrol folks.
Hello. Are you good? All right. Board of Supervisors, County of Lake, State of California, proclamation designating the week of May 18th through the 24th, 2024 as National Safe Boating Week in Lake County. Whereas, the National Safe Boating Week is observed to bring attention to important lifesaving information for recreational boaters so that they can have a safer, more enjoyable experience out on the water throughout the year. And whereas, in the calendar year of 2022, U.S. Coast Guard statistics revealed that recreation boating fatalities decreased. Of the 659 people who died in fatal boating-related accidents in the United States, 445 of these fatalities were due to drowning, and 370 of these boaters would be alive today had they worn their life jackets. And whereas, Lake County Flotilla has continued to provide free life jackets to youngsters by participating in community activities which promote child safety and educating the boating public in safe boating practices. Whereas, Flotilla 08-08 of Lake County will continue its efforts to educate the boating public by resuming safety patrols, free vessel safety checks, and to encourage boaters to practice safe boating habits and to wear life jackets. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Lake does hereby designate the week of May 18th through the 24th, 2024 as National Safe Boating Week in Lake County, and urges all users of Clear Lake, Lake Pillsbury, Blue Lakes, Indian Valley Reservoir to safeguard their lives by wearing life jackets when boating, exercising safe boating practices, and boating responsibly. Passed and adopted this 14th day of May 2024 and signed by the Chair of the Board of Supervisors.
(applause)
Would you like to say something?
Hello, I'm Dorothy DiLoppe. I'm Public Affairs Officer for the Flotilla. As most of you know or do not know, Flotilla is an all-volunteer organization, so consequently, I'm by myself, because the majority of our members are working out and they spend their time with, their extra time with the Flotilla. We have, we're running a membership. If you'd like to join, go onto our website, which is flotilla88oflakecounty, and you'll find all kinds of information. Also, we will be resuming our safety patrols, because we're right now training some of our newer members to be crew and coxswain. Also, we were able to give away at least 70 life jackets in the Children's Advocacy and Safety Fair that was held here in Lakeport and also in Clear Lake. And once again, we will be giving away life jackets on the North Shore, in Lucerne, at the Canokta Bait Shop. We'll be giving away free life jackets for children 12 years and under when they're with their parents. The Flotilla has been in Lake County from, as far as I know, more than 30, maybe 40 years. I've been in the Flotilla for over 25, so consequently, a lot of people are not aware of the Flotilla. So when you're out on the boat, or you're out on the lake somewhere, and you see our patrol boats, we're a safety patrol. We'll just, we will not stop you unless you're doing something that is really not safe. Is there any questions from the audience? Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, I just want to thank the Flotilla and, of course, our Marine Patrol. It is a big lake, and it looks placid, it looks calm, but when you are out on the water, you can be a stone's throw away from shore and still find yourself in serious problems. And I appreciate the outreach and the training the Flotilla does. I'm out on the water frequently myself, and I would like to report that everyone is universally putting their life vest on and following safe boating practices, but I can't honestly report that. We have a mix of locals who hopefully have some good understanding of the lake, but we also have a good number of tourists who are not familiar with the lake, who don't know where the low-water obstructions are, and who don't necessarily know that not all boats play in the same lanes, and they need to respect each other. So thank you very much for your continued support of the Flotilla. I'm going to be hooking you up with some new members, hopefully, and we're all here together. So our boating clubs, thank you, and.
Join.
Yep, yep. Add it to my to-do list. You know where to find me. Thank you also for Marine Patrol. And understand, again, if you get in trouble, it ain't like just picking up 911, and you're going to get help instantly. Again, even if they had instant response capability, it can be miles away from where their boats are. So please, please be safe, because chances are, if you do get in trouble, you're going to be alone. So thank you.
Any other comments? I do want to add real quick, I think this is perfect timing. Again, in our consent agenda, we did approve for the event for the Buckingham Test and Tune Boat and Car Show, and I wish them a safe event and hope that they all use their vests as well. Appreciate the program that the Flotilla does. I know I've seen you down at Red Bud Park many a times handing out vests. Very important. We have a beautiful, full lake this year. This weekend, already quite a large number of boats, a large tournament was occurring out of Red Bud Park. That's going to continue on. Memorial Day is really the time where it intensifies, and we start seeing a lot more activity. So please be safe out there. Make sure to wear your vests and listen to what the Marine Patrol has to say when they happen to see you out there on the lake. Okay, I believe we're on to our last proclamation, 6.8, our 9:14 a.m. item, Presentation of Proclamation Designating the Month of May 2024 as Military Appreciation Month. And if you are a veteran, please come on up. Dais? Or?
All right.
Or not?
Lone Ranger. Well, first, before I read this off, I want to say thank you to Ginny for reminding me and keeping me on task. You know, we do the Tango Mike, and she takes care of that and is always on these proclamations when it comes to that, because we like sending them to the soldiers on the packing parties. I was thinking about something as I was preparing for this, as my son is 18, signing up for selective service, thinking about that, explaining to him, well, there isn't a draft, but in case there is, you have to be ready for it. And so he's like, when was the last time there was a draft? And I was like, Vietnam. So Vietnam has so many soldiers that were drafted, and back then, volunteers were, you know, they were dime a dozen, but you know, there wasn't as many as there were drafted. And so I'd just like to emphasize that, because we're talking about the Military Appreciation Month, and the fact that the Vietnam veterans really weren't appreciated at that time. And so I just have a soft place in my heart for Vietnam veterans, but I just wanted to also include that we do appreciate them as well, and I'm just giving that shout-out to Vietnam veterans, because they are probably our seniors now, like when it comes to, there's a few Korean War veterans, there's a few World War II veterans, maybe? But it's now the Vietnam veterans who are the eldest. So with that, I will read the proclamation. And so, this proclamation is designating May 2024 as Military Appreciation Month in Lake County. Whereas, the freedom and security that citizens of the United States enjoy today are the direct results of the sacrificed and continued vigilance by the United States Armed Forces over the history of our great nation. And whereas, members of the United States Armed Forces and the family members who support them have preserved the liberties that enrich this nation, nation, making it unique in the world community. And whereas, in 2004, the United States Congress passed a resolution proclaiming May as National Military Appreciation Month, calling all Americans to remember those who have given their lives in defense of freedom, and to honor the men and women of our armed services who have served and continue to serve our country. And whereas, the months of May and June were selected for this display of patriotism, because during these months, we celebrate Victory in Europe Day, VE, Military Spouse Day, Loyalty Day, Armed Forces Day, and Week, National Day of Prayer, Memorial Day, Navy Day, Army Day, Hua, and Flag Day. And whereas, the months of May and June are an opportunity to acknowledge and salute the families of those called away to duty. And whereas, Lake County is the place many veterans, close to one out of every 12 residents, proudly call home. And whereas, the Lake County Board of Supervisors recognizes the courage and sacrifice of all veterans and active-duty military personnel in our communities and throughout our nation. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Lake County Board of Supervisors does hereby designate the month of May 2024 as Military Appreciation Month in Lake County, and calls upon all residents to show their gratitude and appreciation for our military personnel by the appropriate display of flags and ribbons. Passed and adopted this 14th day of May 2024. Signed, Chair of the Board of Supervisors, Supervisor Sabatier.
I realize you do a lot of proclamations, and it may seem as though they're trivial, but I can assure you they are not. I can speak for the ones you've done for us, that we send in Operation Tango Mike care packages. Copies of this will be at our Veterans Museum, they'll go to our United Veterans Council, they'll be at Frick Hall, they'll be down at the Veteran Service Office. This may only seem like a piece of paper to you, but it's. during these months, we celebrate Victory in Europe Day, VE, Military Spouse Day, Loyalty Day, Armed Forces Day, and Week, National Day of Prayer, Memorial Day, Navy Day, Army Day, Hua, and Flag Day. And whereas, the months of May and June are an opportunity to acknowledge and salute the families of those called away to duty. And whereas, Lake County is the place many veterans, close to one out of every 12 residents, proudly call home. And whereas, the Lake County Board of Supervisors recognizes the courage and sacrifice of all veterans and active-duty military personnel in our communities and throughout our nation. Now therefore, be it proclaimed, that the Lake County Board of Supervisors does hereby designate the month of May 2024 as Military Appreciation Month in Lake County, and calls upon all residents to show their gratitude and appreciation for our military personnel by the appropriate display of flags and ribbons. Passed and adopted this 14th day of May 2024. Signed, Chair of the Board of Supervisors, Supervisor Sabatier.
Well, thank you for doing this. I realize you do a lot of proclamations, and it may seem as though they're trivial, but I can assure you they are not. I can speak for the ones you've done for us, that we send in Operation Tango Mike care packages. Copies of this will be at our Veterans Museum, they'll go to our United Veterans Council, they'll be at Frick Hall, they'll be down at the Veteran Service Office. This may only seem like a piece of paper to you, but it's significant to those that read it that realize they're being thanked and recognized. Small little caveat with this, you know, we've been doing Operation Tango Mike for a couple decades now, and we had a soldier came home to a packing party, and he was talking about exactly this, the Military Appreciation Month proclamation. In Iraq, they were having a very difficult time, they'd had a bad week, they'd taken casualties, and one of his fellow soldiers said, "This is terrible, this sucks, nobody even cares that we're here." He pulled this out and read it and said, "That's not true, this is what they do where I come from." So you do make an impact. So thank you for doing this and recognizing them.
So Ginny, I just want to thank you for always bringing these to us and making sure that we're on task, because we do do a lot of proclamations, and it is important, every single one of them are important. And you really have been a leader in this space for a long time, and thank you to everyone that's served, and our colleague here, and we've got some in the audience. When I look at the wall in our lobby, I'm just overwhelmed with gratitude for those serving, but also the families. And when you're a military family and your loved one is overseas, and you don't know when they're coming back and they're not here for holidays, that is a big sacrifice. And you only know it when you live it. And then, yeah, and then sometimes they don't come back. So thank you again for bringing this to us today and always.
Thank you for those comments. I just want to add that I wish I knew, and I don't at this moment, and hopefully we can put it in next year's proclamation. We have a number of veterans who are part of the staff of the County of Lake, who serve their communities and continue to serve in a different aspect. And I know that that standing ovation was for you, as well as everyone else who have been part of the military in their lives. So thank you so much.
Yeah, I just want to follow it up with, thank you for your service. Take the opportunity, say that every time, but it's also, as elected officials, our job to make sure, when they do come home, that they have the services that they need, whether it's mental health issues, other things that we're doing, so we just continue along that path. But PTSD and all the other things that change an individual when they go to war are very important, that we address those needs when they come home and take care of the folks that have sacrificed everything. So I just want to say thank you very much, and that's it.
I guess it's picture time, unless we're gonna sing the Army-Navy songs, but I only know the Army song, but I'm not gonna sing it.
item. I'm looking back at our tax collector, are we ready for this item?
Yes, we are.
Okay, so let's go ahead and take that up. Consideration of the March 31st, 2024 Report of Lake County Pooled Investment, and Patrick Sullivan and Liz Martinez are coming up. Good morning.
Good morning. We also have Carlos Oblitas from Chandler Asset Management on Zoom here, and he's gonna be able to run through the presentation if your board's ready.
We are ready. Good morning.
Good morning.
Are you able to share your screen, or are we putting up the presentation?
I'm able to share my screen if you're ready for me now.
Yes, we are.
Okay, fantastic. Give me just a moment. And what I'd like to do is just start with this overview of the overall investment program. I think it's always helpful to know that there are numerous components to the overall investment program. This is the consolidated view. This tells you all the money that the investment pool has under its command currently. It's 530, let me zoom in, that might be helpful. It's 500, almost $534 million when we include accrued interest. There's a couple things that I want to highlight here, which I'm gonna explain. We, you remember that, that there's a component where we manage a piece of it, and then there's a component where the treasurer manages a portion of it directly, and then there's various cash accounts that are kept liquid in order to meet day-to-day liquidity needs of the district. When I combine everything together, that comes up to the $533,863 million. That's currently earning a purchase yield of 513, but I think that in past meetings, we've discussed that there is a component of this investment program. It's cash that's held at Wells Fargo Bank, which we're not managing, but your treasurer was proactive in setting up an automated money market sweep with that component. I think, I think that amount is about $60 million as of March 31st, and that amount is earning a yield of somewhere around 5.1, which is not being fed into this 3.13 number, because we just have no way of capturing that. We've been working with, 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 just with the treasurer and the bank, and also our operations team, to see if we're able to get that fed into there. But to give you an idea, that component, when, when the actual yield on the cash in the bank is, is being earned, that brings this number here to 3.7. So the yield of maturity, that, that interest income that you're due to earn for the coming year if nothing changes, currently is quite strong. And, and when we include that cash component, it brings it up to 3.7, that's a pretty competitive number. So you're seeing some pretty competitive rates, the highest we've seen in about 15 years. We're currently reinvesting program-wide, including all the cash components, at somewhere around four, almost four and a half percent. So pretty, pretty, pretty strong return, pretty, well, I should say yield, which is your earnings rate, and a very high credit quality. You're averaging a AA, AA+. So when we look at the overall program, the key factors here is it is very, very well-diversified. And, and the components here, this was done on purpose. Every color that you see in this pie chart was, was, the amount that you see there was deliberately decided in terms of diversification, in terms of identifying how much risk is being taken on, and for every component, and then of course, what kind of return we're going to get. As I mentioned, we don't manage the entire portfolio as your investment advisor, we simply just manage the components that are securities. So that's everything in here, except for this local government investment pool, this LAF here, Local Agency Investment Fund is the state pool, and then of course, all the cash which currently sits at the bank. Everything else, of course, is an investment security. It carries a return that it provides to you over the long term. These are debt securities, they're bonds, which means that you're lending money to the issuer, and at maturity, that money comes back to you, and while that issuer is using that money, they pay you rent on it, they pay you income. I started here rather than on the economy, because I think it's always good to go back and see what the different components are doing. This is what you look like on a consolidated basis, and I'm gonna skip this piece right here, but just take a look and see, when you look at the liquidity, this is the term structure of the entire program, the 530-plus million dollars that I just mentioned. You've got about a little bit over 35%, so just a little bit over a third of it coming due within the next 90 days as of March. So a lot of liquidity. Obviously, this, this was as a run-up, as we were nearing April 1st, or April 10th, I should say, when your treasury collects property taxes. So there's, this is going to get outsized, and through the course of the year, of course, this gets spent down as the pool participants and the county utilizes its cash to meet its obligations. And again, this is the history of that yield, this would actually be a little bit higher, that 3.13, when we include that cash component, where we're not capturing that yield, is really 3.7. When we look at the different components, the component that we manage on your behalf, that's 374 of that 500 million-plus part. We're currently picking up 310 on it. We're reinvesting somewhere around 503, and it's very high credit quality. I want to remind you that there's a strategy to this portfolio. We maintain this portfolio somewhere near with a duration of somewhere around 1.7 years. We're at 1.67, we're just slightly short of the benchmark. We rebalance every month, or periodically, that's gonna get bumped back up a little bit higher than that. Obviously, as maturities come in, the portfolio gets shorter every day, we call that aging, it ages every day. So we have to rebalance periodically to that target. When you look at, so these are the pieces that we manage. I'll tell you that most of the performance in the portfolio, most of the strong performance that you've seen have come from the corporate sector and the asset-backed sector here. The reason is because these, these are, they're non-governmental securities that, that, you know, it, it costs them a little more to finance themselves. When you've got Apple, or you've got Microsoft borrowing money from the capital markets, it costs them a little more than the government, and for that reason, they pay a little bit of a higher yield. And that's been a very strong component in the portfolio. To that end, I want to, I do want to back up to that piece where we have all the consolidated, and I just want to zoom in really quickly. So this is what every issuer in the portfolio looks like right now in the entire program. The United States government is by far the biggest, the biggest piece of your portfolio. This cash is that, that 11% is that Wells Fargo that's earning the, the about 5.1, which brings your yield up. You can see that all, these are all governmental agencies, but when we start getting out of this and the, and the local government investment pools, when we start getting into the corporate bonds here, anything that's, that's below the pools, and, and also governmental securities, everything is very, we, we just slice and dice it very small. We don't like to have our eggs in one basket, and you can see that in most instances, our exposure to anything that's not a governmental security tends to be very, very small. We just like to, we firm believer in diversification. I want to go back to that, that breakdown. This is, so we mentioned that this is the portion that we manage on your behalf. We did establish a little side portfolio. Some of the funds that you were keeping in pools and at the bank, you, you were, you were earning, and particularly in the state pool, Local Agency Investment Fund, the yield was a little lower. We collaborated with your treasure tax collector to set up a separate account to handle some of those more liquid assets, understanding that these would be held to maturity, and that these were gonna be spent down at some point soon. You can see that those are currently picking up 5.38% per year, and we're reinvesting at a very, very similar rate. The reason this is happening is because there's an anomaly that we've talked about, it's called the inverted yield curve. It's just an anomaly where shorter-term investments are paying more than longer-term, and this is why we set this up. We wanted to capture this, working in conjunction with, with your treasure tax collector, we just, we collaborated to get that done. When we look at that, all of that component is treasuries, so we're managing this component on your behalf. And then the component that we're not managing, this is the 107 million that includes cash, it includes the local government investment pools, it includes the state pool money, and that's averaging somewhere around 209. When we bump this up, this, this is the part that would go up higher because of that suite-vehicle yield that we're not capturing. I want to back up and go to the economics and kind of explain the key things about all of this. I think the key things are that we're leaving, living, we're living in a time of volatility as rates move up and down. These are two, five, and 10-year treasury yields, and they've been very, very volatile. And most of this volatility has been caused because investors are trying to figure out when the Federal Reserve will start lowering interest rates. It's generally anticipated that the Federal Reserve will have to lower interest rates. Interest rates are, are the highest they've been in about 15 years, and, and that makes for very tight financial conditions. They do that by, by changing something called the federal funds rate. They manipulate it and they set a target for it, the target is called the federal funds target rate. But this is this yield right here on the right, or this, this, this chart on the right-hand side. They raise those rates to combat inflation that came about at the end of the pandemic, and, and now they're, they're in the process of, of maybe reversing, walking some of that back. At some point, we anticipate that they will start lowering interest rates. That will signal to the markets that, that, that the economy is, is not as strong, and they need to stimulate it by lowering rates, making it cheaper for investors and businesses to borrow money to help move the economy along. We're not quite there yet, so that's the reason you're seeing this volatility. There's that yield curve and the inversion that I talked about, shorter-term yields are currently paying you higher yields than longer-term treasuries. So what is the economy doing to sort of drive what the Fed is, is thinking about? Well, despite the fact that, you know, normally they would, you, you would think the Fed would lower interest rates when, you would lower interest rates when the economy is slowing down, and you would raise interest rates when it's heating up to combat inflation. And so, you know, it would, you would expect that, that right now, the economy is slowing down, and they would need to lower rates. Well, that, that isn't quite happening yet. If you look at it from a labor perspective, we're still having strong, better-than-expected labor numbers. In March, we generated 303,000 jobs. In April, that moderated, we don't have the April number up here, it moderated into the 200,000 range, but it's still, still very, very strong labor numbers. Inflation is still, when you look at the Fed's measure, the chart on the right-hand side, personal consumption expenditures, that is still above the Federal Reserve's target of 2%, which shows you that there's still strength in the economy. The consumer sector, when, as measured by retail sales, retail sales have made a little bit of a comeback, and they're stronger. They're skewed by these post-pandemic numbers here, but, but when you zoom in just on this section, they're sort of normalizing and coming back strong. When you look at housing, housing has had a little bit of a comeback in, in prices, there's still demand for housing. And then of course, when, and this is an interesting one, this is a survey number, just trying to see where manufacturing is. When you, when these numbers are in the gray area, it's contracting, and I just want to highlight here, very short, and just very small piece right here, manufacturing is starting to make a comeback, moving into expansion territory. So why am I showing you this? I'm showing you this because you would expect that the Fed would lower interest rates if the economy is weakening, but it's not showing a lot of signs of weakness. What it is showing, though, is that consumers are still resilient, jobs are still strong, but at some point, these high interest rates that we see here, this, this high Fed funds rate, and as a result, these high interest rates that we've seen, the highest we've seen in a long time, will have a toll on consumers, will slow things down, and at some point, the Federal Reserve will have to start thinking about lowering interest rates. And, and what it means for you is that when they do that, when they do that, it'll mean that your existing holdings will go up in value, because you're, you've picked up higher income streams, higher yields. But of course, future reinvestment will be at a lower pace. When will that happen? The Chandler Asset Management view is that we might see some of that occur towards the end of the year. There may be one move, going back to this chart, maybe one move, perhaps two moves, to lower interest rates. There's a camp within our investment team that, that thinks that we'll see the Fed start to move this June. I'm not in that camp personally, but, but I do believe with a firm view that we'll see at least one, perhaps two easings, or, or that's the term for it, lower, lower Fed funds target rate through the course of the year. So in the meantime, what we do to combat that, and to make sure that we continue earning, is we diversify. And we, and even though we're getting a little bit of a lower yield in the longer maturities, we still buy them, and we still have the exposure out as far as we can to be able to protect the income stream. If we keep too much too short, a lot of this will get spent down, but if we keep too much too short, we'll lose yield on this piece faster if interest rates do start to fall, and, and we'll be forced to reinvest at a lower rate, and this is why, why we diversify. That's what I have to share with you today. Let me pause there and stop sharing, and perhaps there's some questions that I may be able to answer.
Thank you very, thank you very much for your presentation. Mr. Sullivan, just wanted to check in if you had any additions?
Yeah, I do have additional material that I can share here. So Carlos, have you ended your screen sharing?
Yeah.
Yes, I have.
So I can put up the figures just locally here. This is the chart I've shared with your board previously. It reflects the quarterly interest over the last few years, just from the beginning of the investment program that we set in motion to where we're at now. So I would just highlight that we mentioned before how you'd see some drops. For instance, two quarters ago, we brought in just under 3.7, then it dropped to under 3.5. Now it's, you know, continuing that upward trend, closer to 4.4 million. And that is because of the type of securities that we hold. Interest payments come in twice a year, those payments on bonds, so it's that irregular flow. So we're continuing to trend upwards, and I wanted to highlight this since you saw that small drop last time. And I would expect to continue to see that, that we may go up and down as we increase. We would still expect to increase over the course of the next year, as our portfolio continues to drop. as our portfolio continues to drop those older maturities that Carlos was showing that are existing at those lower interest rates. When we reinvest them, we're picking up those higher rates. At some point, that may shift. If rates come down, we're going to level off. But until the Fed starts dropping the rate, I don't know when that's going to be. The other point I wanted to bring up is that, as we shared, there's that liquidity portion, that smaller, that piece where we're holding it for a shorter amount of time. In some ways, we'd like to trim that, but just given the reality of the state of affairs in California, I don't see that happening. One of the concerns we have is the state budget deficit. We have those irregularities, and when we receive payments from the state, we have concerns that those could increase. We also don't have all the answers we need about local spending because just remember, our treasury pool includes schools and other agencies. So if anything, that liquidity portion is probably going to stay where it is or perhaps even increase. Fortunately, right now, what's in that liquid pool exists, as mentioned, the Wells Fargo account, where we have the sweep for money market, but also the government pools, which are all earning a fairly high rate. I mean, even LAF, I believe, is up to 4.5% now. Those other pools are earning in the 5.4 to 5.5 category. So I don't have any concerns about a real loss of revenue by being more liquid. But in the long term, that could become more of a struggle. As rates begin to drop, we, we want to decrease that liquid portion of portfolio. And until we have more details and answers and until some of those funding situations at the state are resolved, that's going to be hard for us to do. So I just wanted to share that, and I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Pyska?
I think this is everybody's favorite graph.
It's a good graph.
And I really appreciate seeing the, the portfolio change so much over the last few years. At one point, it was one color. And so thank you for all of that, Carlos. A question that I get asked is where, where is this money going? And I know, Patrick, you and I have talked about this, but we are seeing these earnings and we're about to go into budget hearings next month. And so can you talk a little bit about where this is all going in our county budget?
So just to keep in mind, as I think we've discussed before, a little over half of this pool is made up of county funds. The remainder of it is schools. Schools is by far the majority of that remainder. The rest of it represents some fire districts and other smaller districts throughout the county. What the county chooses to do with that money really falls back on your board. Right now, when we apportion that interest, we're doing it at the fund level. So basically, everyone's getting paid based off where, the amount of money that was in each of those funds. So it's proportional to how much money any agency had within its account and also where it had directed that money to be. But during the budget process, that's where your board decides that. So this will come full circle, and then that's something that you guys are going to have to figure out.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Green?
Thank you for the presentation. It's taken a little while, but I think I'm getting there. I think I'm understanding at least 20, 25% of what you're saying, and I feel good about that 25%. I'm also seeing the first podcast. This is really, this is, I'm glad our funds are doing so well, but it's like you're taking a look at the nation as a whole and economic indicators and interest rates. And it's just fascinating. That information is as helpful arguably for our private investors as public investors. The only question I had was semantic, and it's not a big chunk of holdings, but supranational was a term I hadn't heard before. I guess that refers to international investing. And it's less than 1.5% of our portfolio, but sometimes people do have questions about if funds are being invested abroad and how they're being invested abroad. And I don't necessarily need a breakdown on that today if you don't have that information. But could you just highlight very briefly what a supranational investment is and what these two funds are doing?
Carlos, can I kick that one back to you?
Absolutely. So a supranational bond, supranational debt is simply debt from World Bank umbrella organizations. Those were allowed by California Government Code in 2014. And there are a few reasons why they were included in code. Primarily because in 2014, federal agencies and government-sponsored enterprises that you do purchase, they were issuing less and less. And local government investors needed more options to be able to diversify the portfolio. And they settled on supranational securities. And the reason that they settled on these is because there are many supranational organizations under the World Bank umbrella and also others that, that aren't under the World Bank umbrella, but they settled on three of them. They are the Internet, Inter-American Development Bank, the International Bank for Reconstruction and Development, and IFC, International Finance Corporation is what it's called. The three of them are dollar-denominated, and they are domiciled here in the United States, in Washington, D.C. And the backing is from the United States government and all the member agencies that have signed on to the agreement for that particular supranational organization. Their primary purpose is to help poverty eradication with projects in, in Latin America, in the Caribbean Basin. They're very well-managed. They have long-term track records of strong financial management. Currently, they're AAA rated by all three rating agencies. Even the U.S. government isn't AAA rated right now by all three agencies. So for that reason, they were included. It's, it's an opportunity for local governments to diversify their portfolio in a very safe manner.
Thank you.
I have a couple of comments and questions. One is on page 22 of the report, there's a negative percentage in the portfolio from account receivable payable cash of negative 0.62%. Just kind of curious if we pulled out money, money early and had to pay a penalty or what the explanation might be for that?
So that is not the case on this. This actually has to do with the change in the reporting structure that Chandler has. Now it's a, and Carlos can correct me if I'm wrong on this, but now it's a trade-based reporting system. There's actually a much larger portal that we now have access to where we can go in and get a more detailed breakdown. But because it's a trade-based system now, it has to account for essentially money that's in transit so that we're not doubly reporting something. Because this report is a moment in time, we have to account for sales or maturities that are happening. And that's what that adjustment is. That's basically an adjustment to our sheet here to reflect that money that is in transit. Unless, Carlos, do you want to add anything to that?
No, that's exactly what it is. When you, when you buy these securities, you enter into a trade with a broker, and then the actual money exchanges hands, the money in the security exchanges hands a few days later. So there's a time lag. And, and we recently changed our portfolio accounting system to better capture your positions on a trade date basis. It's more, it's, it's a practice that's more accepted from an accounting perspective. The term is GAAP, Generally Accepted Accounting Principles. From an accounting principle, it's, it's, it's superior when you recognize a security that you own or a transaction that you've entered into from the date that you entered into it rather than from the date that the money exchanges hands. So it's exactly what your Treasury tax collector just described. It's money in transit. So from a trade date basis, we entered into a trade, we bought a security, and we book it in your statements as holding it. But in this case, because the month-end was, was a weekend, the trade did not settle until the following month, basically the first of the following month. So in order to balance the portfolio, we, we show that you own the security, even though you haven't paid for it yet. And so the cash is still sitting in your account, and you, you're holding the security in your books. So we have to adjust that and create a payable to offset that. And it just means that it's, it's money that you're going to be paying out the first of the next month, which you already did. And that is, you will be able to see it on, if you look at the holdings report. In fact, I can really briefly just show it to you. I've, I've got it right up. If you're able to see my screen, this is, this is the holdings report for the consolidated. Here is the payable for 300, 300, or 3,649,511. So it's payable. You have some receivables as well. It's money that's due to you, but there's that 3,649. And if I, that's the holdings. And if I go to the transactions, which I'm going to do right now, there are the purchases. And you can see that the settlement date is, this is through March 31st, you can see right here. But the settlement date for this particular bond, this was a mortgage-backed, a federal agency mortgage-backed security. It's settled on the first of the following month, and there is your 3,649,511. So you own this security, but you hadn't, the money hadn't left yet, so we have to book it as a payable.
Appreciate that response. Thank you very much. There was also, I wanted to bring up the concept of what we did not make potentially this past quarter or potentially over the course of the year. We borrowed $3 million from our general fund and $1 million from Social Services that was in reserves. Those could be and probably are eligible for being used in our investments. At 3%, we're looking at maybe $120,000 over the course of a year. And that's just me making some basic math. I'm wondering if there's a way to get the potential overall loss from that activity? Not because I, I think that it's something that is bad that we did, but something that we need to tell the state that this is the result of the actions that have taken that we weren't able to invest and we missed out on bringing this, these funds to our community. I know in medical billing, there is ways to get interest if there is a problem on the source, on the side of the reimbursement. But I think having those numbers available would be really useful to at least bring that to the state's attention and say, hey, this was supposed to be paid a year ago before you were in a deficit budget. And now you're probably going to say no to us to giving us interest because of the budget, but yet these payments were due a year ago, and we've had to take a loss because of your inability to reimburse us in time. And so I'm thinking in our investment pool that that has the potential to impact it. And before I continue, please, has there been an impact? Is there the potential for an impact? And how can we figure out what that amount might be?
Yes, I, I think the impact you've described is just roughly correct, that that's the impact of the county. If it were to continue for an extended period, there is an impact to treasury pool operations in general. Like I said, just combined with everything else, that increased uncertainty may lead us to be more liquid. However, right now, there's that inverted yield curve that was described. So we're actually earning more in the short-term securities. So the money we're keeping short, we're actually earning the highest rate on, which is an unusual situation. I wouldn't expect that to continue. But if the state would honor any kind of request for reimbursement, our office is happy to work with behavioral health or admin to help calculate out what that would be. If we need to look at the quarterly pool rate, we could, I'm sure, come up with a more specific number. I don't know if the state would honor that request, but if that's something the county wants to do, we can certainly help calculate that.
And I don't know that they would honor it at all, but I think personally, and I don't know if the rest of the board agrees, that it would be something to share with them and let them know that this is our loss based on their activities and their lack of activities. Not sure if others want to make a statement on that or agree or disagree. We'll leave it at that. My next one is-
We could track it and then decide if we want to communicate it.
Be willing to do that. Obviously, knowing those numbers, it's always great to have those arguments when we're having the conversation.
And then my last one is, I believe we started this new policy and all of these reports starting in January of '21 or '22, I forget which year, but in January. Is that when our annual reports are typically meant to be, is in January?
So we do, I mean, essentially the quarterly report that you get June 30th, the, well, I mean, we do it in July or August. That represents the annual report to the board. We're doing the quarterly reporting along the way. So our quarterly reporting is actually meeting the same criteria as the annual. So that's why you're not seeing a big difference. If anything, we could probably trim the quarterly report back. But yeah, so you'll continue to see the same type of reporting. It's just going to change based off, there's been a few changes with GAAP reporting standards and some other legislative changes over the last few years. But what you've seen since 2021 is roughly what you'll continue to get.
Okay. And the reason I ask is, I feel like there's a part of this that isn't very transparent. I know I listen into fire district meetings, I listen into school board meetings just to keep up with what's going on. And I don't hear of this is what we've received. I have the total number, we're at 4.3 for the quarter, but it would be nice annually to say, this is how much the fire district's received from this investment. This is how much the school district, doesn't have to be individualized to each one. I think that's too much. But just because right now, I don't know the specific number of, out of the 4.3, what is for the county general fund or what is coming back to the county. And I would like to see an annual report that has that level of transparency so that we can recognize what the investment is for all of those districts that are taking part in our investment pool. And again, not sure if the rest of the board would agree to that.
I would say we can readily provide that apportionment at the fund level. And many of these districts hold multiple funds. So I think my office can sort of readily provide that data by fund. Beyond that, for a further breakdown, you'd really have to go specific within that district. Like, for instance, with the school district, you're going to see in their operational fund a certain amount of interest that we've given. But then if you go into their budget, they're accounting for it in a completely different way. So I think it's always going to be a little tough to marry up those two. But at the same time, just to be clear, school districts, for instance, other districts, they do have access into the system. They can see what, what they've received. But yeah, I totally understand the desire for that broader picture, and that's readily attainable at the fund level.
Because we're investing for all of them. And our report is very big picture, but not, not specific to the county schools and so on and so forth. And not sure if board members agree to seeing that level of detail. And again, not looking for the nitty-gritty funds, but just schools, fire districts, county, and whoever else are the, the major components of it.
Well, that, that sounds more than just requesting the fund level.
Yeah, the fund level report is what I can-
Yeah.
-is what I would like to see. But then to break down what those are, someone would have to look at it and identify, you know, which funds go to Lakeport Unified.
And I don't need to break down.
Okay.
So, I mean, well, I don't agree that we're not being transparent. I think this is a new situation that we're dealing with, and now we can be more transparent as we go. So I don't like, I don't, I don't want to agree to something that seems negative, which is not. We're growing, we're learning. I do like the idea of what you're saying, though, is having a little more in-depth. Because I was, you, you asked a couple of questions I was going to ask already, so it covers it. And I do know that the, some of the agencies, they, they can look into this on their own as well, but it would be good to have.
They can, and they do.
What's that?
They can, and they do.
Yeah, yeah.
But for our side of it, it would be helpful to see the fund levels.
We can definitely include that breakdown in the future.
And I will admit, maybe not the best choice of words. Appreciate and agree, just looking for that extra.
So just a question, then, at the yearly report, that's when we would see the fund level? Or you're going to try and add it into the quarterly? I would be fine with the yearly report. So then you could start from there just on the yearly basis.
Sure, that could work out well, especially because the next report I do will be that, that annual report. So I can include that breakdown then, and you can see it. And that'll give you an idea of what we can readily do. And if you have other questions, we could address them then.
Thank you very much.
Just want to make a point, too, obviously, as Supervisor Pyska said, just seeing the report and the direction we're going. What a world of difference over the past few years. So we are, this board was actively working towards where we're at now with Patrick, the new tax collector, and moving forward with these investments. So good job, admin, good job, everybody, moving this thing forward because we're making positive strides in the right direction. That is positive.
Thank you. And I'd also like to take the opportunity to thank Treasury staff because this program has been obviously successful, but it is an increased workload. There's a lot of work that goes into making it work. So thank you to Liz and the other staff in the office for making this happen on our end, too.
Yep, thank you very much. Thank you, Liz, thank you, everyone else.
Just wanted to add one, just to expound off of what Supervisor Simon said. Just, you know, our groups that invest in this as well, the education and the fire departments, they struggle with a lot of situations that we do. Like law enforcement had the issues with bringing people in and whatnot. So these funds help tremendously or will help tremendously in that aspect as well. I know that Supervisor Spatia, we go to the chiefs' meetings sometimes and whatnot, and they have a lot of issues retaining and recruiting and things like that. So this is another way to help, you know. So just that, like, like was, you all were saying, especially Supervisor Simon, about coming into this direction and building these funds. It's going to help in that aspect as well. So thank you, Pat, and Liz, and the whole department.
All right, with nothing further, let's go ahead and open up for public comment. I see-
I see nobody getting up. Please come on up.
Michael Weg, Michael Wagner?
Assistant Morgan?
Yeah.
Thank you, Board, and everybody for being here today. Go over this stuff. Man, what huge steps you guys have made in the past couple of years. I remember when we first went over this, what, two, three years ago, and it was like, oh, my goodness. So with that, like, just absolutely admirable and great job in turning those numbers around and making things work. I know Patrick individually has done a huge amount of effort put forward to see all that happen, as well as each and every single one of you guys. I did have just a question, and I'm not sure if Patrick could answer it, or maybe Carlos would be more appropriate. With the heavy investment into the U.S. Treasury bonds and the increase or the rate of increase that we've seen, my question would be, based on the 35% of investment, how much did we wind up losing, or I'm not even sure if that's the right term, with the increases in rates from the Fed since inception?
I think I can address that question. I think you're referring to the loss in market value of the fund. As rates increase, those bonds we hold are dropping in value, but the difference is, we're holding them until maturity. So if we had to sell a bond early, we would take that loss, but because we're holding it until the end, we're not incurring that loss. Because it's true, as we were purchasing bonds, rates would increase just within a week, and our market value would drop. So if we had not had the cash on hand and had to sell that bond in order to pay our bills, we would have incurred a loss. But we kept enough money liquid that we did not face that situation. So while there could have been a loss realized, we have not realized a loss here in our pool.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but I think what we mean is, we haven't realized a loss yet. Is that correct? Meaning, if the rates continue to climb, as opposed to go in reverse, eventually that paper loss will turn into a real loss. But I could be totally wrong, I'm not an expert.
I would say that's not the case with the type of securities we hold. The U.S. Treasury bonds that we hold, we retain that face value. So when we, when they reach maturity, we are not going to realize a loss. The only way that we do is if we have to sell early, and that would reference why we're keeping that larger amount of money liquid. Perhaps we could have gotten away with less, but we were hedging and just sort of trying to be cautious in this. And Carlos, I don't know if you had anything to add on this?
I do. The way that you described it is exactly right. These are loans, and which come with an income stream, that's your interest, and the value of that income stream can go up or down depending on what other investment opportunities that come before you while you hold that bond. And of course, as you correctly stated, interest rates have risen, which have devalued, if they've dropped the value of the county's holdings since that time, since rates have risen. But that drop in value is simply on paper, it will not be realized unless the, unless the security, or the entire portfolio for that matter, is sold. Now, we do have the ability and sometimes do sell before maturity, and that sale can incur a gain or a loss on principle, but generally, when we do it to rebalance the portfolio, to increase liquidity, to improve credit quality, any of those reasons, when we do that, we're generally transferring into, we turn around and reinvest into a bond that's generally yielding more, which makes up for that loss, and that's an active management component that we do. But to your point, yes, there has been a drop in value in the investments. To give you an idea, and I just pulled up the March statement for these investments from last year, and I'm comparing them with the March statements for these investments for this year. Now, last year, the portfolio was sitting on a $10 million unrealized loss, meaning a loss on paper. We would not be, it would not be incurred, because we're basically holding to maturity. It was about $10 million, and that was because of the rapid run-up in interest rates between 2022 and 2020, and the end of 2023. That figure today, that $10 million negative figure, for your information, is now 5.5 negative. So it basically tells you that this portfolio has actually, in the past year, increased in value. We've actually gained the value, the fair value of the portfolio over the past year has gone up. But none of that really plays into the portionment, none of it really plays into, unless things are sold before maturity.
Understood. Thank you very much. And just one last question, and I'll get out of everybody's hair. When we look at our, our portfolio, use that term loosely, when we're looking at like a 5% return, my question would be, how do we make that better? I think, you know, we're shooting for like 7, if we were trying. My question would be, how do we make it better? I think we've done great, and my question would just be, how do we make those yields better?
Thank you, Mr. Wagner.
Well, we're under, I guess in terms of a target rate, we're under pretty strict limitations as a treasury pool of what we can invest in. We can't invest in a lot of securities that, let's say, you see one of the pension pools invest in. So we're capped a little lower. The highest rates out there are between, you know, 5.5 and 5.6% from what I've seen in some of the pools. But the trade-off is, those are very short-term. So I think what's tough and what we've been working with Chandler on trying to balance is, we want to achieve a higher rate, but at the same time, we want to remain cautious and keep all of our investments safe and achieve the liquidity we need. So I think that's why we'll continue to grow. We've been slowly increasing that rate, especially because our portfolio is fairly young. But at some point, if rates were to stay the same in the next year or two, I think we'd level off somewhere under that figure, because in order to get a higher rate of return, we'd probably always have to go shorter or take a risk level that we're likely unwilling to do.
And I believe, I remember the meetings with Supervisor Pyska, our main topics were safe, secure, and liquid.
Yes.
And I think that's just always our mindset in how it is that we invest to ensure that we're always improving and having it available for us. So. Yes, next comment.
I'm Joan Moss, and I have a question about where you go if you don't understand. A friend of mine had an experience, but I have been very well-received at the tax collectors. I told you that the other day. But there are people who are working and own property, and things are explained to them that they don't understand. And it could be that they don't understand English, they could be from Mexico, it could be that they never got trained. And where can they go to get this all explained, if they don't understand? A person owns property and-
And Joan, I want to make sure that we're talking about the investment pool. This has nothing to do with properties, and we're not talking about the tax collector or his office, we're talking-
Where do we go if we want all this explained, so we understand what you're talking about?
Thank you.
I think as far as the investment pool material goes, we do post the entire report, which does include a glossary, and that may help. Otherwise, I would encourage anyone with further questions, they could go to the, perhaps the library and try to access further resources there. Okay?
Thank you for that. And I empathize, Joan. I know in one of our meetings with Carlos, I said that he knows more about money than I will ever know about money. He's obviously gone through a lengthy amount of education to get to the status that he is and his knowledge and capacity to do what he does. This is definitely not a layman report to understand, but I think that the great, simple understanding is, our investment is working to our benefit, including our schools and fire districts and others that are a part of the investment. And right now, we are doing better than we have done in the last 10 years in making sure that we are seeing the benefits from this, and we'll continue doing so. And even just these reports at the Board of Supervisors are relatively new in the past 10 years. So appreciate the question, and yes, it's some very heavy stuff. Do we have any hands up in Zoom? All right, so we bring it back to the board. We have Supervisor Green.
Yeah, just very briefly, if only because I raised the question, I was doing a little surfing during the discussion here. So the two super-nationals basically are development banks and structures. So the one, Inter-American, focuses solely on Latin American Caribbean countries. The other one, International Bank of Reconstruction Development, AKA The World Bank, does fund projects in the Middle East, among other regions, but the whole structure of The World Bank and what they appear to be focused on is emergency funding in war-torn regions, including Ukraine and the West Bank, economic support, lifting up economic opportunities for women. And there have been some recent funding through The World Bank in support of humanitarian assistance for Gaza and the West Bank. And there's nothing in here that indicates any other type of assistance that would be military in nature. So I just wanted to highlight that. I think people can have questions when we're investing abroad, what that money goes for. These particular funds appear to be very appropriate, and I'm glad to see it.
Thank you very much. And I believe we need to accept-
Mr. Chair.
Recommendation.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to accept the March 31st, 2024 report of Lake County pooled investments. I know I got ahead of you there, but-
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Carlos, thank you very much for your work.
Thank you, Supervisors, and thank you, Treasury Tax Collector. We'll see you in the next one.
We're going to go ahead and take a 10-minute break, and then we will continue on with our 10:00 a.m. items, sitting as the Board of Equalization. So we'll be back at 10:52. Welcome back. We are going to move on to our item eight, sitting as the Board of Equalization, Assessment Appeal Hearings. I do want to check in with Lloyd Guintivano. I'm told to open up for public comment now before we get into the individual items, as public comment for those individual items are for the property owners or the applicants themselves. Just kind of wanted to check in on the process before I move forward.
Yes, so just as a sort of a summary rundown, and to start off with those two, with that point, the Assessment Appeal Hearings are not subject to the Brown Act requirements, and public testimony is not required. Any testimony should be taken under oath, and that's why it's limited to the applicant or the appellant and any other witnesses that the appellant may, may not have, the department as well. If testimony is taken, there's, the burden of proof is based on a preponderance of evidence. I'm not sure, just based on the items, if this will be covered as far as the categories, but just to cover all our bases here, for residential owner occupied properties, the appellant presents first, and for non-owner occupied properties, the assessor recorder presents first, by way of evidence presentation. The informal rules of evidence would apply, so application of evidentiary rules are on an informal basis, such that any relevant evidence admitted can be considered by your board, and the decision on these appeals belongs solely in your board, sitting as the Board of Equalization for purposes of these next three items, which is 8.1, 8.2, and 8.3.
Okay. And then, again, is it possible to open up public comment about the process right now before we dig into the individuals?
Correct.
Okay. So before we move on to item 8.1, I do want to open it for public comment, again, about the process and the appeal hearings, not about the individual items within the following items. And please come on up. And again, this would be about the process and the appeal hearings, not about the individual items that we will be discussing.
I want to thank you for explaining this to me, and I'm hoping to stay and understand something, but at least you let me know and warn me. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Joan. And I do not see a hand in Zoom at the moment. Okay, so we'll go ahead and close. Okay, I'm going to close public comment, and Supervisor Green?
I just want to make a quick comment. On the process, there were no staff reports submitted with these items. It's not a self-explanatory process. I thank County Counsel for his brief explanation of how these hearings are going to be conducted or not conducted. But in fairness to this board and in fairness to the public, having some type of staff report attached to these items, I think, would be helpful in the future, and that's just me speaking my opinion right now, not looking for consensus. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we are going to continue on with item 8.1, consideration of withdrawal on the following Assessment Appeal applications. A, number 07-2023, Charles Belig; B, number 27-2022, Deborah Bakhtari; C, number 28-2022 through 71, 2022, Geysers; and D, number 01, 2023 through 04, 2023, Ori Wheeler; and E, number 21, 2022, and 25, 2022, Safeway; and F, number 74-2022, Davita Inc. And we have Mr. Schwinger and Ms. Janakis to present or respond to these items.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the assessors discuss each appeal with the applicant or the applicant's agent, and are agreement that no reduction in value is warranted at this time. And also included in item 8.1B is the 2023 application to be withdrawn also. So there's two applications for bacteria.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions regarding this item? I did have a little bit of confusion on the Geysers one, since they filled out both sides of the application-
Correct.
-to extend the timeline and to withdraw, but withdrawal is what they're looking for.
Correct. And we settled that. That's what we call a protective appeal. They didn't have enough time when, before the close of the filing period, to go over and review all the documentation. We got the appraisal from them, from our consultant, Russ Bertoff, for the valuation. After they, we verified the 115 parcels and went through all the allocation, they were in, did all our numbers that they were happy.
Sounds like it was a lot of work. Mr. Guintivano, wanted to check in, can we approve all of these withdrawals as one?
Yes, it'll be by motion to accept the withdrawal of the listed Assessment Appeal applications and deny the appeal corresponding with said applications.
Okay. Let me check first, is there any appellant that is either in the room or in Zoom? I see none on either, so I'll go ahead and bring it back to the board for action.
I'll move the recommended action.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. Moving on to item 8.2, consideration of request by the appellant to continue the following Assessment Appeal applications. A, number 06, 2023, Blakely Hall; and B, 73, 2022, Robert McMullen; and C, 24, 2022, Tesla Energy; and D, 05, 23, Wendy Jameson. Mr. Schwinger?
Yeah, these are all applicants' requests for continuance, and we have no objections.
Okay. Any comments or questions regarding this item from the board? Seeing none, wanted to check if we have the appellant in the board chambers or on Zoom. I see no one in either, and bringing it back to the board for action. Thank you.
Okay.
Is there a time?
10:00 a.m., November 12.
Move to continue to November 12 at 10:00 a.m. The Assessment Appeal Application, 06-2023, Blakely Hall; 73-2022, Robert McMullen; and 24-2022, Tesla Energy; and 05-2023, Wendy Jameson.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. Consideration of stipulation for Assessment Appeal, number 22-2022- Consideration of stipulation for assessment appeal, number 22-2022 and 23-2022, Robert Coats. Mr. Schwinger?
Okay, so the assessor valued the subject property in Jason Parcel as of the date of death for a family transfer with no sales price. The subject was valued by means of a desk appraisal and considered in average condition at the time of transfer. The applicant filed an assessment appeal with a probate referee appraisal and a list of problems and deferred maintenance issues for the two parcels in this assessment. The assessment appeal stipulation before you is value is the probate referee's appraisal with a basic cost to cure a portion of the issues to make the property sound and livable. So we were on the middle of the road. It was on the lower end, based on the condition, but we were in the mass appraisal before we closed the roll, getting all the non-value ones where we just had to transfer to get on the property tax roll. So once you file an assessment appeal, it kind of locks it, so we don't make an adjustment until it comes before the board.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments? Is there any of the appellants in Zoom or in the board chamber? All right, bringing it back to the board for action.
Form of the motion.
So it would be, your board may move to approve the stipulations proposed for the properties described in assessment appeal application numbers 22-2022 and 23-2022. And for further clarity, that would be APN number 006-022-020 for application number 23-2022, and APN 006-022-0604, application number 22-2022.
Again, would love to see that recommended action and a staff report, so we don't have to do it on the fly. So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That concludes the portion of the Board of Equalization, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we'll see you November 12th at 10:00 a.m. All right, we will continue on now back as the Board of Supervisors with item 610, our 11:00 a.m. item, Presentation of Health Services Director, Anthony Arton's Work Plan for Fiscal Year 2425. Good morning, Director.
Good morning. All righty. Well, good morning. Thank you for having me. Happy to be here, happy to be your Geysers Director. So today, I just wanted to present to you a quick little report on my first three months. As promised during my interview, I said I'd write up a quick little SWOT analysis for you guys and then just give you an update on the work that's been happening and what we're planning on doing moving forward. Oh, what button? Enter? Okay. So a couple strengths. So we've got a nice little base here. Our staff are kind, they're caring, they're dedicated, and they're thirsty for improvement. As you guys know, most of our staff are pretty new. We only have a few staff members that have more than five years of experience, and almost all of our management team is new within like the last couple of years. So there's a good opportunity to help mold them and get them going in the right direction. Our community partners are excellent. There's a lot of resources out there. It's just really about collaborating with them and getting them coordinated and all moving on the same page. But yeah, they're willing and they're wanting to help. I think they understand kind of the issues that are going on with the Health Services Department, and we're getting a lot of help from a lot of different agencies, and I want to thank Director Jones for her help from BeHable Health. We have a lot of good collaboration going on with her already. Weaknesses, several. So as you guys are aware, the policies and procedures are very out of date. A lot of our policies and procedures are more than 10 years old. The county policies are great, but internally, there's a lot of work to be done, and so we're doing our best to assess that and start moving forward. There's also several things that are out of regulatory compliance, just from a basic lack of awareness. You know, what you don't know is what you don't know, and unfortunately, there are some programs that we've had to put on pause because of that. Workforce development, our recruitment, as you guys are probably aware, suffers. The hiring process is pretty inefficient. Our training and onboarding is poor, and there's numerous vacancies and a lack of direction and vision. So this is something that I've been putting a lot of my time and energy into already. Our HR, our internal HR person, Ash, has been doing a good job, and he just gave me hopefully updated policies and procedures on our recruitment and our onboarding process. So that's something that's being addressed, hopefully in the near term. Fiscal budget, although there seems to be a fair amount of resources for us to be able to operate, one of them is under threat right now, but there's a lack of awareness on their programs and their budgets. There's no quarterly reporting, so it's been hard to make decisions sometimes, especially for long-term planning without a good awareness of where we're at, what funding's not going to be there in a couple of years. So it keeps me, you know, a little bit awake at night, but that's something that, again, that we are addressing as well. So there's a lack of revenue generating services. A lot of the services that we provide for free, that's great. It's mostly education, but we're not doing like private immunizations, and that sometimes can cause an issue, and there's not any revenue to be collected from that. So that's something that we're going to be looking at. And when I think vaccinations, I think of the Public Health Department. So we do do the VFC program and the 317 program for Medi-Cal, but again, we're not billing for it, that's free, but there's an opportunity there to try to generate some revenue for the department. When I came on, the organizational chart was disorganized. There was a lack of understanding of who reports to who, several staff with multiple supervisors. That still continues on a little bit, although we've got that narrowed down to just one person at this time. She's just basically filling dual roles, but that's something that I dislike in organization chart, having two supervisors, always think of office space or... Yeah, office space, where you have five people coming and saying, you didn't do your TPS report, so. The building, it's hazardous, it's overloaded with material, it's a little bit of a fire hazard. There's a lack of space. We were in the process of hiring, we might have to put a little bit of a pause on that right now. But yeah, it's also a poor location. We're right next to probably our largest competitor, so. And although they do great services, not exactly ideal if you are trying to, you know, start services that generate revenue in the future. Our HVAC and our roof are overall in poor condition, so there's a lot of work to be done with our building as well. And then our equipment, most of it's older, slower equipment, software's out of date. As you guys know, and I appreciate, thank you for approving a new EHR for environmental health last week, but there's also some more EHR that we're probably going to have to do, especially if we move towards billable services. So I apologize if this comes off as mostly negative, but I wanted to give you guys an So opportunities, utilize grants, funding to recruit new positions, fill vacancies, update software, expand services and position Lake County Health Services for long-term viability. And then I've been working very hard since day one to kind of transform the culture there, set a vision, give direction, update policies, and do a reorg of the organizational chart, and building relationships. Threats, unfortunately, this one is coming to realization. The downturn in the economy, especially here in California, is likely going to impact our funding. I believe I updated you guys with that last Thursday or Friday. External threat actors targeting counties and health departments, so that's like our cybersecurity threats. So that's been on the increase. In my prior position, we were hit, and so that was a really rough couple of months. So those threat actors are out there, and they are trying to target health departments. So obviously disasters, that's probably no surprise to you guys. Many wildfires have happened here in the last five to six years, and then again, space on our building. We're running out of space. So right now, our vision is to become more of a service delivery public health department. Again, we're pretty heavy on the education and the administrative side of things, but I'd really like to start some more basic services for the people and try to get out in the community more. Within the first six weeks, I think, of being there, we took the work that Susan was able to do prior to my arrival. She did an all-staff meeting all day and kind of ironed out some three key priorities, so we turned those into a strategic plan. So naturally, this is addressing a lot of those threats. Workforce development is the number one. Financial sustainability, going to be a little bit more of a challenge now, but that's definitely high on our radar. And then the external and internal communication. And then our internal communication is being addressed right now. We're posting our, we've started an all-staff drive, we're posting our minutes for management meetings so that all staff can see what's going on with their leadership, so. And then I'm sending out monthly communications to all the staff so they know what's going on and keep them updated. So some of our accomplishments so far, this is my favorite little win that I've had so far in the first three months, is the new program accounting sheets when I came on. They were spending, we were spending a lot of money on a new software system. You would think going electronic is probably the most effective and easiest, but this was not the case. It was causing a lot of the staff to spend two to three hours a week updating their program sheets. In public health, our timesheet accounting can be a challenge, because sometimes you have to enter notes for certain programs, you have to account like every 15 minutes, and there's not like one revenue. So you have to account your time for two certain grants or certain contracts, so it gets a little dicey. So we went to, we created program sheets that are Excel sheets, it's just much simpler, and so far, that's been a hit, it seems like. Again, I mentioned this, we have our strategic plan, we created the all-staff drive so that people have access to leadership team meeting minutes and documents that need to be between environmental health and public health. So there was a little bit of silo happening, so we wanted to make sure that staff had all access to the documents. I finished one-on-ones with every staff member, I met with everybody for about 30 minutes to get to know them, get to know what drives them, what they like to do, so just kind of building that relationship and the rapport with the staff. In the process still of meeting with community stakeholders, I've got probably almost all the fire departments done, I think, at this time, and then I have meetings coming up with the CEOs of the hospitals and tribal health, and any positive changes from other community partners that are out there, Hope Rising and stuff like, other organizations like that. We have updated our emergency procedures and policies. Obviously, I think that's a high priority, making sure you know what to do in emergencies, so we did get that completed. Trevor, our PIO, has updated a communication plan, again, addressing some of the internal communication issues that the agency's having. Couple weeks ago, we were awarded the Mobile Outreach Clinic. That's a large van that's going to go all throughout the county, so that'll help kind of address some of the building issue and our location, so we can kind of go where we want to now. And that's great for health equity, so we can get to some populations that may not be getting reached. And then our home visiting team had their first client, so that's good. That's a new program that we've started recently, and that's a big, up in Oregon where I'm from, that was a big hit up there. It's a really great program. Really helps change the trajectory of parents and children's lives. Some other work in progress, again, I think I've addressed some of this, tobacco retail licensing, I hope to have in front of you guys, hopefully in the next month or so. Okay, that one didn't get updated, studying timesheet solutions, so we've got that addressed. Filling vacancies, I think we've filled six or seven vacancies since my arrival, and I think we've lost two staff members, so we're in a net positive there. And again, revamping recruiting, our hiring and onboarding procedures, updating the website, updating MOUs and MOAs with our partners, looking to have a backup deputy health officer, a contracted position, and then updating our environmental health software. So a lot of these, you are pretty well aware of what's going on. So looking ahead, again, trying to start some more services, so additional STI screening and testing in the community. And up in Oregon, I'm not sure if this will be allowed in California, but hopefully our insurance will allow it. But if somebody were to test positive on a rapid, starting at least a one-time administration treatment right then and there, and then referring them on to primary care. And that has a lot of success in knocking out a pathogen if you get to it early enough, so that's a nice way to utilize those rapid tests. Additional vaccine outreach, again, we have the home visiting services getting started. We did get a grant for about $500,000. I believe that was probably the first contract that you guys approved since when I arrived. That's the pass-sided grant for the community health workers, and so we're going through a TA marketplace right now to get a consultant to kind of figure out how to best utilize those community health workers, and hopefully have some billable services through them too. And then again, the Mobile Outreach Unit for education and some additional services. So yeah, we're studying the fees for services already provided to see if we're missing out on any potential billing there. We're trying to slowly clean and organize our building. Potentially, we're probably going to have to implement some additional remote work to address the space issues, especially if we do end up continuing to hire based on funding, so hopefully that stays. Increased use of artificial intelligence for efficiency for our staff, that could be writing press releases, it could be help writing with grants, helping do some of the, you know, getting forms and templates started. So that's a good use of AI, kind of help save 30 minutes to an hour in staff time. I'd like to get an internal audit contract probably set up, hopefully in early fall, just to bring more awareness of what we're missing, what we're not doing right, and so we can have more of an awareness of how to correct those things moving forward. That's a pretty standard thing that I've seen with some other health departments, and that's not happening here. Again, with all of our funding being one big pool of several different funds, it's kind of good to make sure that we know, hey, are we utilizing all the funds correctly? What else can we be doing to capitalize on some of these funds and how to spend it properly? And then additional coalition building. So what do I need out of you guys? Please continue to be public health champions. Please help spread the awareness of all the good work that we're doing. We are moving in the right direction. I am seeing some very positive changes. I know that, again, this might come off as a little bit negative, this report, but again, if we can't be honest with yourself, you can't improve. So we're going to help support the transition from more of an administrative focus to service to delivery focus, support revisions of the org chart, I'm working with HR on that. And then our hiring process, when it comes to healthcare, if you're not in the middle of the pack with what you're paying, then speed is key. So you've kind of got to be the first of the line for job offers sometimes, and right now, I know that it's a pretty slow process. I don't want to come off as complaining, but that's something that we need to kind of work on and hopefully make it a little bit more efficient, so that we're first of the line, at least, making an offer so we can get some key personnel, especially like when you're looking at nurses or community health workers. Anybody that's actively doing a healthcare service, they get offers pretty quick. So I think that's it, and thank you so much for your guys' time. Hopefully it stayed under 15 minutes. Any questions?
Thank you very much for your presentation. Supervisor Green?
Just never apologize for being truthful. This, to me, was a breath of fresh air. It shows to me that you have not just landed, you've dived in headfirst and have been swimming in uncharted waters.
Yes.
And I was excited to hear what's coming up short-term. Quick process question, love the slide deck, hope we can get it posted with the agenda item after the meeting. And also, you didn't call it out in your needs, but if the building has issues and you have some hiring capacity, maybe the space committee would be another place you want to hang out to see if, because other county departments, they're also in flux too, and their increased use of teleconferencing.
Yeah.
We may have some space available if you're outgrowing your space or if you want to make some changes, so.
Fantastic.
That's kind of a suggestion, and I don't know if there's board consensus, but I don't know if we need one at this point, but if you feel you have a space constraint, we do have a process for that.
Fantastic, yeah, no, I didn't know about that. I have reached out to our partners at DSS, as I understood that they had some cubicle space, and they're located in Lower Lake, and that would be great. We just could utilize a couple of cubicles, and especially for like our environmental health team, rather than drive to Clear Lake and Lakeport back and forth twice, they can do, most of their work is in Clear Lake, so they can go do the inspections, and if they live close by, then they can pop into the DSS building, do their reports and forms, and then go home. It saves so much time and driving, it makes things more efficient. So we are looking at some of those options to try to be efficient, both with our travel and our time, and also gaining a little bit of space too.
Right. I'll look to my colleagues and staff to further advise you. Last thing, PNP's, they're not hot, they're not exciting, but gosh, they're important.
Yes.
They're important for compliance, they're important for onboarding of staff. It can be super frustrating to land in a new job, be very excited, and not have adequate guidance.
Right.
And those PNP's are there for a reason, and so go Team Health.
Yeah, for sure.
I'm excited to see those come online. Thank you.
Yep. We have a committee that I hope will help take on some of that work, as well as I have some plans, if funding allows, to kind of start a workforce development and quality assurance.
They're important for compliance, they're important for onboarding of staff. It can be super frustrating to land in a new job, be very excited, and not have adequate guidance. And those P&amp;Ps are there for a reason, and so go Team Health.
Yeah, for sure.
I'm excited to see those come online. Thank you.
Yep. I have, we have a committee that I hope will help take on some of that work, as well as I have some plans, if funding allows, to kind of start a workforce development and quality assurance coordinator that could help out with that. So fingers crossed on that one.
Any other comments? Appreciate your presentation. I know that I've seen you quite often out in not just meeting with agencies and going to other committee meetings, but I've seen you in the public as well. You're, you're getting yourself immersed in the community that you've come to, so I appreciate seeing that. We knew we needed to make sure the foundation was strong, so thank you for bringing to us every aspect of what needs to be done so that you can have a strong foundation to really build on. I know that we have been looking at our health metrics for quite a while, with hopes and desire to see that change, and so I'm looking forward to seeing this work plan come through. I know that, yes, it's good to look at the service-oriented part, but I'd like to still see public health or health services still be the umbrella of those changing of the metrics, leading the CHNA and things of the kind, but I know you are involved in those discussions and will continue to be. So at this moment in time, I think you've painted a realistic picture of what it is that needs to be done. Happy to continue and support what you're doing, but I know that, to me, the, the true goal is changing those health metrics, but you got to have a strong team and a strong foundation in order to make that happen. Happy to hear about the changes also in your net positive for your vacancies at this moment in time. That had gone down, at least for one of your funding, I think it was, I don't know that it was Public Health Administration, I think you have three sections, I think you have just a normal public health section that was down to like 60%. So I look forward to seeing that being built, because you can't really get the job done if you don't have the people doing the work. So looking forward to it, appreciate the presentation, and thank you for the work that I've seen you do already from, from the get-go. Actually, I will say one more comment, and I know Director Jones probably heard it. Friday, we had the opioid settlement, and there was a comment that there is no public health in the city of Clear Lake area, or at least in the South Shore area. And so I think if there's a way to look at some of those vacant offices and providing those services closer to some of those that have needs, I think all, everybody wins at that point.
Yes, I 100% agree, we do need to have some more presence in the high-populated area, for sure.
Thank you very much.
Especially with its challenges there.
Yeah, absolutely. So thank you. And if there's nothing further, then let's go ahead and open it up for public comment. I see no hands in Zoom, and no one getting up in the chamber, so I'll bring it back.
Just looking forward to the following, or I'm sorry, looking forward to the follow-up so that we can start tracking the improvements.
For sure. Excellent. All right, well, again, thank you so much, and yes, I'm super happy to be here in Lake County. This is probably the most beautiful county I've ever seen. The people here are great, and I've, this has been a really good, positive change for myself as well. So thank you so much for giving me this opportunity.
Don't go quiet yet. I believe Supervisor Simon has a comment.
Just thank you very much, too, for the report today, Anthony, and, you know, obviously you talked about the, the business side of it, or the opportunity to see if we can create revenue in your, your department, but also I like the home, the home visit stuff. You know, this country's gone away from that. Doctors used to go to the homes, check on folks. I really think that's a great opportunity here in Lake County to go out and engage with the families and encourage them to do what they need to do. So I'll be excited to see how that moves forward in the next year, so.
And that team is working really hard trying to market and build up the caseload, and Kim has done a great job getting that program off the ground and going. So hopefully, we see a lot of good progress in that. I'd love to see, you know, 50, 60 families on there, and we can continue to grow that, grow that team. It's a, like I said, it was quite popular in Oregon. I think we served probably 300 or 400 families a year with our home visiting services, and it just does enormous work inside the home, from basically the time the woman gets pregnant, and it's guidance, it's resource help, it's getting people pointed in the right direction, but it just makes a huge change in the trajectory of a child's life. So I absolutely 100% agree. I'm glad to see you guys are supportive of that.
And in rural environments, we know that our last CHNA, one of the top priorities was access. And I think that that is absolutely trying to attack the issue of lack of access to some of the more rural, more, can't find the word, reclusive areas in our communities, and so get, making sure that we can provide that access to mobile unit, I'm very excited about, can't wait to see that happening. And the fact that we already did our first home visit is already a good start. So thank you very much for your presentation. All right, we will move on to item 7.2. Consideration of letter of support for Clear Lake's grant application for Lake Shore Drive Safety Enhancement Project. This was brought to the board by myself and Supervisor Simon. Did you want to speak on this?
I just think it's a great opportunity as we move forward to support the city of Clear Lake and any advances they're doing down there. You know, when we talk about mobility, we deal with this, a lot, a lot of conversations at the LTA and APC, safety, obviously cutting down our carbon footprint, but also giving that mobility opportunities, enhancing the city of Clear Lake, anything we can do. I'm just happy to be able to partner with you, Supervisor Bautista, on this, and hopefully get the support today.
Absolutely. So we're looking at something that aligns with what the Area Planning Commission creates, which is the Active Transportation Plan. This would provide bike lanes, sidewalks, and all types of mobility access for Lake Shore Drive between Olympic, which is where City Hall and the city police station is, all the way to Highway 53. And so this is a letter of support. This is the simplest act that we can do to try to help support getting those funds so that they can make that happen. Any questions or comments? Supervisor Green.
Super quick, happy to support this. Is the local matching funds, is that all APC money, or?
I believe that would.
Has that been designated yet?
I believe that would be a mixture of city funds and APC funds.
Okay, but have they, they haven't been committed yet?
I believe they are committed to that, or else they wouldn't be asking for the grant, and I apologize that I can't respond any better than that, on that.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. If there's nothing further, I'll open it up for public comment. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this item? I do not see a hand in Zoom, and no one getting up in the board chambers. Bringing it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve a letter of support for Clear Lake's grant application for Lake Shore Drive Safety Enhancement Project.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
And authorize the chair.
Oh, and authorize the chair to sign.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. Thank you for your help, Mr. Guintivano. And let's move on to item 7.3. Consideration of A, Letter of Support to the Lake County Resource Conservation District for a Request for Proposal to the Governor's Office of Planning and Research for the Forest Sector Market Development Grant with the Lake County Community Risk Reduction Authority, JPA, as the funded partner. And B, authorize County Council to provide services and invoice the Lake County Community Risk Reduction Authority, JPA, for up to 25 hours of grant support. And we have Teri Lockston with us.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
We will.
Okay. I'm very excited to bring this before you, as you have probably, in a couple of my presentations, I've talked about the Risk Reduction Authority joining the pilot projects, the biomass utilization and aggregation pilot projects. Well, at the last minute, the state of California decided that they needed to do an RFP process, and so the RRA considered and voted to allow me to respond on their behalf to this RFP. So I've been working on that a little bit, and then at the last minute realized that the Risk Reduction Authority in and of itself, which is a joint powers authority, wasn't quite eligible to apply on their own. For one, they don't have their own employer identification number. As you may recall, the county, through the, the County of Lake, through the bylaws and the administering entity of the Risk Reduction Authority does the financials for them. And so we looked at other eligible agencies who could apply on their behalf, and of course, the Lake County Resource Conservation District, which does a lot of work in mitigation. Primarily, what they were looking for was experience, working with licensed timber operators and registered professional foresters, which the RRA in and of itself didn't have, the members do, but, you know, as an entity didn't, but of course, the RCD does. And so they are submitting the grant on behalf of the Risk Reduction Authority.
And then Supervisor Simon? Just to follow up with this, we were able to pull together a special Risk Reduction Authority meeting on last Friday where these approvals took place. We had lots of conversation about budgets, other opportunities, you know, as we move forward. So the Risk Reduction Authority has approved RCD on our behalf to go for this grant, and we would work in collaboration, and I just wanted to make that known, that we were able to get that done on Friday.
Okay, thank you. Anything further, Supervisor Pisca? All right. Any other comments? Supervisor Green?
Just because I don't see called out with any great specificity, the B item on the recommended action, 25 hours of County Council time for grant support. So is there, would there be a budget allocation in there, or how's that going to work?
Yeah, actually, you know, as County Council did some work for, you know, starting the RRA, and this grant fund will be to reorganize, and one of the consultants would be, is a legal consultant that would look at new foundation documents and bylaws. I just assume that County Council, since the county is represented, and the Watershed Protection District, which is represented by your board, that our County Council would want to review it, if he would like to.
Guintivano?
Yes, we've had prior discussions with the consultant, the attorney who's also involved in this matter, and our office will be working in collaboration with that attorney when it comes to the documents that are needed to, to effectuate this project.
So I just wanted to make sure his time was covered, out of, instead of from county funds, out of these funds, if he's reviewing.
Any further questions, Supervisor Green?
Again, it's being covered under his existing budget, or you taking a slice off this future consulting contract to cover that?
It's coming out of the, it's the budget, he's got 25 hours budgeted in the grant application, or the response to the RFP, which would be a grant.
All right, and I know that as a JPA, it's its own standing entity, so again, we, we do distinguish between the county and the JPA and all that, so there's no inherent conflict with provision of those services.
Not, no, no anticipated or appearance of conflict from the services that are contemplated as far as what our office is anticipating, what it would do for purposes of this project under the grant.
All right, thank you.
Quick question. We're using our fee schedule for the cost of using our County Council's office? It's not specified within the, I mean, it's only a letter of support, so I don't know what the details are within the actual grant or anything like that, just, just a quick question.
I assume so, yes.
Okay. And I know that my, my immediate thought is always that our County Council's office is already busy with lots of things, but in speaking with County Council, this is something that County Council is happy to do and so happy to support it, especially trying to take those next steps in all the major things that are happening to get this project off the, and running. So, yeah, no, happy to move forward and provide this letter of support so that RCD can continue to do the work that it has been doing to help the RRA move forward. Thank you.
Stephen Carter did confirm that the, our current fee schedule will be used for this process.
Appreciate that. Thank you very much. Any further questions or comments before we open it up for the public?
Just one final comment, too. In the conversations we had at the RRA board meeting, this also puts the JPA a step closer to being eligible the next time it comes out. We need to use RCD to get us those qualifications right now, and so the next time something like this comes out, the JPA will be available to move forward with something like this on our own, always in collaboration with everybody that, that is at the table, but this also gives us those qualifications as we move forward.
Absolutely.
Which is the registered forester, you know, and the other stuff that's required under the grant.
Yep. Every little step counts.
Yeah.
All right, let's open it up for public comment. Anyone wish to speak on this item? I see no hands in the Zoom room, and we're dwindling down to the folks left in the audience in the chamber, so I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Further, I move to approve a letter of support to the Lake County Resource Conservation District for a Request for Proposal to the Governor's Office of Planning and Research for the Forest Sector Market Development Grant with the Lake County Community Risk Reduction Authority, JPA, as the funded partner, and authorize the chair to sign.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Further move to authorize County Council to provide services and invoice the Lake County Community Risk Reduction Authority, JPA, for up to 25 hours of grant support.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have 7.4. Consideration of lease agreement between the County of Lake and Charlie Sawyer, Nancy Sawyer, trustees of the Charles A. Sawyer and Nancy J. Sawyer Trust, and the amount of $12,171 per month for five years. And Director Jones, good morning.
Just good morning, thank you, board. As stated in the memo, this lease is paid for out of AB 109 funding, as approved by the CCP Committee, and we will be sharing this building with probation staff to better provide wraparound services and supports to justice-involved and systems-involved individuals. So that will include all of our treatment services, including substance use disorder treatment services. Colocation is a really nice way of working together and expanding partnership. In perpetuity, the lease will be paid for, and you're going to love this, out of Medi-Cal revenue, provided that that comes to fruition. However, some quick, some rough math about calculations of billable hours and what we would anticipate would be well within the range of our ability to sustain those services. Also, again, contingent on funding that we do hope materializes, but is our, is our plans to expand and renovate our South Shore Clinic, that would require it to be entirely vacated, and so in anticipating and hoping for that reality, we would need a place to house some staff, and so that's, that, that would be a place where we could do that and also expand. We're really trying to expand our services and supports, and so that's, oh, and of course, this has been approved by the Space Committee.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments? Supervisor Green?
Just on page one, that's harmless error, but the parcel situated in the city of Lower Lake, I'm glad to hear that Lower Lake was incorporated, but I don't think it is, so it's a de minimis error, or it could be amended to remove that reference. Thank you.
So it is a pretty big building. I did not know how big, the cost caught me off guard at first, but when I measured the acreage, which includes the parking lot, and then compared it to some of the other ones that we lease, it's definitely within the range, I guess. It's, it's a large number at first, but I think this will be shared by both probation and yourself. Will there be a need for any changes within the building itself as far as more costs added to the lease, or as-is?
No, as much as-is as possible, and social services has been so gracious, and a lot of the furniture they're leaving, so we're going to work with the building pretty much as it is.
Okay. I appreciate, appreciate the collaboration, not sure if I'm just more keenly aware of what's going on between behavioral health and other departments, but I am, I'm seeing an elevated collaborative network that's happening, and I appreciate seeing that, because it does impact so many different aspects. So thank you.
Thank you for that, Supervisor.
There's nothing further, let's go ahead and open it up for public comment. Anyone wish to speak on this item? I see no hands in the Zoom room, and only Megan left here in the chamber. Bring it back to the board for action. Mr. Guintivano?
Mr. Chair, just a couple of notes in addition to the proposed minor amendment on Section 1A in reference to the deletion of city, the phrase "city of," right?
Would it become the town of, or the township?
Or Lower Lake, California.
Okay, and, yeah, just in Lower Lake.
And also on the signature field, I believe the, for the, signature field for the clerk of the Board of Supervisors, it should be revised to state Susan Parker. of the Board of Supervisors, it should be revised to state Susan Parker. And the recommended action calls for, requests the approval of the lease agreement authorizing Behavioral Health Director to sign, but the lease agreement has the signature field of the chair of the Board of Supervisors to sign. So your board may, as part of the motion, may authorize the chair, the board, to sign the lease agreement if your board wishes to approve it.
Thank you, Mr. Guintivano.
And I'm definitely okay with all of those amendments.
So you're saying Ms. Parker's signature is to attest as clerk to the board? All Move to approve the lease agreement as amended between the County of Lake and Charlie Sawyer, Nancy Sawyer, trustees of the Charles A. Sawyer and Nancy J. Sawyer Trust, in the amount of $12,171 per month for five years, and authorize Behavioral Health Director and CAO to sign. Oh, I'm sorry, authorize the chair of the board and the CAO to sign in their respective spots.
Second.
Do we have any further comments, looking at CAO Parker and Mr. Guintivano?
Did I mess that up?
We're good. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. I apologize, I do have a question post-approval, because it makes no difference. When's the timeline potentially for moving it?
Yeah, so we're working on it now. They're very nice. They're, you know, so July 1st, obviously the official, but our, we've already, we're in there already.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. Next, consideration of amendment number one between County of Lake and Everwell Health Systems for Adult Residential Support Services and Specialty Mental Health Services, in the amount of $125,000 for fiscal year 23, 24. Director Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wish I could say that this is the last of the amendments for this fiscal year, but that is not accurate. We do have, I believe, a final batch coming through on the 24th, or the next agenda perhaps. These are, again, for direct care patient services. Typically, people who are on conservatorship are needing this placement. So, and we're wrapping our head or thinking a lot about how do we bring people on conservatorship home. It's not always possible, however, I think we can do a lot more. And so, in an effort to do that, we're going to go to our neighboring county, Mendocino, here in the next couple of months, and look at some facilities that they have to get ideas about what it would look like and what it would take to bring more of our people on conservatorship back home. We do have two board and care facilities, which is a place where people can live with some supervision and guidance in the county. It's not enough, and so looking at potentially going out to bid for other folks, because we would not be able to stand up a residential level of care. We have to work with a CBO or community partner, but looking at who in the community might be able to stand that up and meet some needs for these individuals. But definitely, in order to not only cut costs related to placement for those folks, but also to get people back into our community and preserve their dignity, we would want to see more of them coming home. So hopeful we can have some more updates about that in the next year.
Thank you very much. Are these services reimbursable through Medi-Cal?
Yes, depending on the person's aid code. It's a variable reimbursement rate. Some people have dual eligibility for Medi-Cal and Medicare, and that changes the reimbursement structure. So, yes, and then it's not all the same.
That's awesome. That's what complicates everything. Thank you very much. Any further comments or questions from board members? Open it up for the public. Anyone wish to speak on this item? I see no hands in Zoom. I see no one getting up in the chamber. I know that it's all closed public comment. I know Director Jones and I spoke. These are services that have already been rendered. This is not an anticipation of further services in the future with the situation at the state. And I will just add, with new programs that are supposed to be started, that the state has already done step one with certain counties, and we're part, we're in cohort number two, that it does concern me as to what next year will look like, but providing these services are important. And it's going to be difficult to figure out if the state continues to be the pipeline clog that they are at this moment in time for reimbursement. So, just wanted to make that statement. Thank you for the conversation yesterday. Looking for action from the board.
So I'll move to approve amendment number one between County of Lake and Everwell Health Systems for Adult Residential Support Services and Specialty Mental Health Services in the amount of $125,000 for fiscal year 23 and 24.
And your board may also add, authorize the chair to sign.
Oh, that's, I assumed that's what it was, but I didn't want to be wrong.
Second.
And authorize the chair to sign.
And we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. Thank you very much. And do we have, I don't see Patrick Sullivan.
He's on his way.
He's on his way. So let's just take care of item 513. This should be relatively fast. Approve, no, sorry, which one?
11.
511, thank you. Approve late travel claims for August through December 2023 and January 2024 for long-term care ombudsman volunteer Heather Hearn. So the reason I pulled this item is I wanted to make sure in our, because I know there was some conflicted thoughts on what this was, hence why this is, has some oldest reimbursements that are being brought to us. And I wanted to make sure in the motion to mention that this is taxable reimbursement, since it's past our 60-day policy. Our policy that we upgraded not too long ago is, once it's past the 60 days, we don't want to deny anybody from getting reimbursed for work-related activities. It's just based on IRS code. It has to be taxed. And so I wanted to just help out with the conversation to ensure this was finalized, that our vote today would be inclusive of this reimbursement being approved with it being taxed, as appropriately done so through IRS code. And
That's.
CAO Parker, that's good?
That's good.
Okay. Any other comments or questions Supervisor Green?
Just as soon as you said that, I wanted to gross this up, so that the person actually got all the money reimbursed that they put out. But, anyway.
It is a violation of IRS code, and we get flagged in our single audit whenever we bypass those things, which is why we changed the travel policy in the first place, because we did have some of those red flags that went up in the past, because things would be brought to the board. We would be approving of those reimbursements, but then we would get flagged because we have to follow a policy, and that policy is based on IRS code.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions? Let's open it up for the public. Anyone wish to speak on this item? I see no hands up in Zoom, and no one getting up in the chamber. Bringing it back to the board for action, and looking for that amendment if possible.
Move to approve the late travel claims for August, December 2023, and January 2024 for long-term care ombudsman volunteer Heather Hearn, with the understanding that the amounts paid for these claims will be taxable.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. Thank you very much. We're going to move on to item 7.6, consideration of resolution, further amending resolution number 2019-70 and 2019-162 to clarify the procedures used in the collection of taxes due pursuant to the Lake County Cannabis Cultivation Tax Ordinance. And Mr. Sullivan and Ms. Martinez, welcome back.
Good morning.
Mike needs to be as close as possible.
Is that working now?
[laughing]
All right, so Patrick Sullivan, Treasury Tax Collector. I'm here to present the proposed resolution for the Lake County Cannabis Cultivation Tax Ordinance. The main point of this resolution is to essentially formalize what is already in place. Right now, Community Development, when they send out forms to cultivators, their initial paperwork is standing, need to return it by June 1st, and on that, they need to state the amount of cultivation or canopy area that they're using. What we'd like to do is formalize this process and put it in this resolution, so that if someone does not complete this by June 1st, they will not be able to change their canopy area later. We've been extremely flexible over the last few years in working with people, so has Community Development, but we have had applicants and cultivators basically continue to push this deadline farther back. We had requests from people in December and January, saying that they actually grew less the year before than they thought, and they wanted to adjust their bill. This really puts us in an impossible situation, and it puts Community Development in a difficult position as well, especially if an inspection could not have been performed. So what we're asking is that cultivators in June 1st, as are already doing, that when they present that information, that they are actually locked in at that point, so that they will not, again, be changing it. It, it has put us in the position of just trying to figure out whether someone grew, did grow less, and we don't necessarily have a great deal of documentation on that. We have satellite imagery, and some other tools, inspection records at our disposal, but from our understanding, people would know in June whether or not they're going to be cultivating their whole area, or at least it's a reasonable expectation. So if they did not, if they do not file and declare that they're going to be growing less, our request is that then we would tax them at the maximum canopy area permitted by the use permit. So again, this is essentially the methodology we're already using, with the exception of this deadline has never been enforced. We have previously, as you'll note, made changes through resolution to the ordinance. That's been pursuant to, you know, the language that came out of Measure C. Just for clarity, that's all in the County Code of Ordinances, Section 18-56. That's where your board has had the authority to adopt policies, adopt policies and regulations, or modify, repeal, or amend different sections of this ordinance in order to make for more efficient and effective enforcement and regulation. So that's what's happened so far. This resolution is just continuing on that string that's already discussed in here. So I'm happy to answer questions and provide any kind of clarity about what the situation is and why we're pursuing this option.
Thank you very much for your presentation on the item. Any comments, questions, board members Supervisor Green?
Just a question. So, you're relying on the growers' notification to a different department, Community Development, as whether they're going to be growing their full allotment under their use permit, or some portion thereof. So far, so good, right?
Yes.
But CDD is not the tax collector. And all that's filed with CDD is either a reduction or a non-op notice. If, if they intend to cultivate the maximum area, they don't have to file any paperwork with you or CDD, right?
If no paperwork were to be filed, we would automatically assume the maximum canopy area, yes. They're still filing paperwork with CDD, but if it's not indicating less or not operating, we would impose the maximum under the use permit.
They would only file a CDD if they were seeking a reduction or an exemption, right?
In the past, perhaps, but, correct me if I'm wrong, the form CDD has is indicating the canopy size on it, right? Yeah, so everyone right now is filling out a form that is indicating what their size is.
And that form is currently due by June 1st to CDD?
Yes.
So whether it's a full grow, partial grow, or no grow, they're on the hook to file something with CDD.
As part of all their other documentation of CDD. And just a reminder, tax, we never created an enforcement or field division for this program. We essentially, the county allocated additional funds to Community Development and Code Enforcement. That's why it's going to them, because we're not doing inspections. We don't have staff to do them. So just for clarity on why all this is part of CDD's process, it's because we don't have our own field division right now.
All right. And so, although this is kind of restatement of existing policy, on that form, where the growers attest to CDD what they're doing this year, are they given ample notice that their failure to file this form or something timely will result in imposition of the maximum tax?
Yes, if you look back at the history of prior resolutions, it, part of the reason to do this one is that we used to define opt-out as essentially one process and reduction as another. And at one point, I believe one of them had a June 15th deadline. It started out June 1st, but then there was a grace period until June 15th. I believe opt-out originally started as July 1st, but changed to June or May. Yeah, so there've been different sets of dates, and each of those has corresponded to whether you're reducing or completely waiving off cultivation. So that was the other goal of this resolution, was to no longer distinguish between opting out and reducing, and just call it what it is, declaring what amount you're using. Because I did think that could have been difficult for people to follow, and perhaps could have led to a distinction of whether you had an extra 15 days, or something like that in a given year.
And these notices, these statements that are filed with CDD, are they submitted by the permitee, the landowner, some combination thereof? I'm wondering if people do come straggling late, looking for tax relief, was there an ownership change on the property? Was it an applicant who should know better? Was it a landowner who got cut unawares because he's been picking up the tax bill for his operator? I'm just trying to make sure. It sounds like the thing is equitable, but if, if there's changing roles within the company, or if the land has changed hands, I'm wondering how we would get that constructive notice of this tax liability to those new owners.
I mean, those are more unique scenarios. I think in the past, just, that's probably the reason we have been fairly lenient in working with people, as the county as a whole, I think with CDD and tax collector, especially when there are changes. We have people that didn't get their permit until July, for instance, so they would have already missed the June 1st deadline. I think if a permit actually went through a proper transfer in the middle of summer, in the middle of the season, maybe that's something we could look at on a case-by-case basis. But at this point, I think most people have established their method of operation. So barring some unusual circumstance where a company or an operator did change hands during the middle of the growing season, I don't really think anyone lacks the notice on this.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions or comments? So, appreciate the conversation that we had. Just kind of reiterate some of those statements. I appreciate what you're attempting to do, because it's got to be, I don't want to say a nightmare, but the amount of changes, last minute, I didn't know about the deadline, whatever it is. To me, this is kind of a, it's based on a tax. We all know that when we pay our property taxes, there's a specific date. When we pay our, our normal taxes, if you're on a quarterly, you have specific deadlines to meet. This is one of those tax-based deadlines. Let us know if you're planning to get anything less. I personally feel very uncomfortable if we end up taxing somebody the full amount when they didn't do the full amount. But at the same time, there should be some leverage to making sure that we get those comments or those statements prior to June 1st. So whether it's a fine for letting us know post-January, June 1st, that you're doing less, that could be something we can look at, or paying what the cost is to make those changes happen in the first place. It takes up your time, it takes up CDD time. Maybe some other departments are involved in that process of the reduction, the inspection, to ensure that that's truly what occurred. Whatever those things are, those should not be necessarily free of charge. You are utilizing public services here, and we're using public taxes in order to accomplish those services. So I feel very uncomfortable if somebody only did 2,000 square feet that we billed them to pay taxes on something they didn't do, such as 10,000 square feet. But at the same time, the opportunities to make those changes should meet specific deadlines, or else there should be either a fee schedule for those changes, or a fine if those changes were submitted after the fact of June 1st, to ensure that you and your staff are not running around trying to figure out how to get these things rectified, especially as we are anticipating to get those revenues in January and in May, and these things only postpone those types of revenues, which only make our budgets kind of a little less dependable, to know exactly what we should and are looking at. That's the way that I would look at, look at it, because in my opinion, the way Measure C is written is not forcibly taxing based on a use permit. It's taxing based on an activity of cultivation. It says the taxes accrue upon legal cultivation. And so to me, that the amount of square footage should be based on the activity, not based on the use permit. Just my, my opinion on, on where to go. And I think that we need a And I think that we need a greater conversation of, is there interaction between prioritizing those that are saying we're changing our size with the inspections that CDD is doing? Is the funding that we're giving through the equity grant, I believe it's through the equity grant for code enforcement?
Public health and safety.
Public health and safety grant, that's coming from cannabis taxes over at the state level. Thank you for the correction. Is that something that we can help with ensuring that this is also helped in this process of collecting the taxes and maximizing correctly what it is that we're taking in? But I don't agree if today, if we are saying that if we don't receive a piece of paper, we're going to tax you on something you may not be doing. I can't agree to that, but I can agree to a fine or to a cost of actual services.
I understand the point about a fine or a fee, because it certainly is an increased workload on our staff. Treasure tax collector is hugely impacted by these late revisions and changes, as is CDD. So I think it could make sense to have that. But I don't think it resolves the underlying issue that if we were to follow that model where we allowed people to make this change later, as we have, I'm just afraid we run into that problem of how do we prove out what happened? Especially, I mean, outdoor grows, we may be able to access satellite imagery, we may have inspection records that came during a certain portion of the year. But for mixed light and indoor, I don't know where that leaves us. At some point, I feel like the cultivator has to go on record declaring what they've done. Otherwise, that leaves us in a lurch later, because I'm not sure. In some cases, we may be able to readily prove it out. And that's part of the reason we've had some flexibility, because we've had satellite imagery, we've had an inspection report, we could tell, okay, it wasn't oversight, you didn't really cultivate that amount, we have an inspection that shows you did less, we have satellite imagery which backs that up. So it seemed reasonable to reduce it. I think the problem is, what are we going to do in the absence of that? And that's what this resolution is trying to target, that if we don't have inspections or we don't have satellite imagery, or if it's mixed light or indoor, and we only have inspections from one piece of the year, if that cultivator's never committed on record to how much they're cultivating, I'm just not sure how we're ever going to resolve that. And I don't have an answer. I'm just, that's why I came with this solution, because it just doesn't, it doesn't seem in the absence of a much larger deployment of resources of staff and other capacity, without the cultivator committing to an amount by a certain deadline, I don't know how we'd do it.
So my question in return to you, which, again, we're kind of rehashing some of the conversation we had over the phone, is if a cultivator says, you should not be taxing me this because this is not what I did, who has to show the proof of the burden, who has the burden of proof to show?
Well, at this time, we're placing on the cultivator to show otherwise. They've filed for a use permit, they've indicated that they intend to use a certain amount of canopy area with the county, and everything they've given to the county so far builds towards that. It's documenting that that's what they intend to do. And in fact, if they really were going to continually do less, that raises other planning issues, like, I mean, are they, if they're not going to cultivate repeatedly, are they abandoning that use permit? Are they figuring other issues because they are not utilizing that permit in any means related to what their stated intent was? So I think that's a key distinction between cannabis businesses, like a dispensary, where, I mean, we're taking their return at face value. When a cannabis business, a dispensary or manufacturer, anyone like that is giving us a return, it's self-reported, it's kind of like transient occupancy tax, we're assuming that's right. We'll audit that. If we develop other information through different software or something else that leads us to question it, we'll investigate it further. But our starting point is that what they have filed, what they have declared to us is true, and we're going to treat it as such. I think with cultivation, that key distinction is that they've already filed paperwork with the county. They have that use permit that's saying this is what we intend to do. So I feel like they've already told us what they intend to do. And if they're going to do something different, then it's, it really should be on them to tell us otherwise. At least, we don't have the resources to go out and prove it differently right now.
Supervisor Green?
Well, I think by June 1st, everyone has, is aware of what they're intending to do for the season, and so they can file this. If there's changes along the way, if something happens, you can lose your crop, like, there's a way to modify that throughout the season and then prove it out?
Well, that's actually what this is basically clamping down on, is that there wouldn't be that opportunity later to say, you know, X, Y, Z things have happened, and now we're not doing it. And that's part of the issue. We have a cultivation flat rate tax, not gross receipts. So it just, no, I mean, this would restrict that. Unless we were to modify this, there would not be a way later to undo that, which is what we've been doing. We have been working with everyone.
Right. Yeah, and I don't like the, you know, changing the fee or having a penalty or sliding skills because, because sometimes people just lean on that because it's the easier and faster and cheaper thing to do. It's easier to beg forgiveness. So I do like this approach of having this done by June 1st, because you have your plans, you know what you're doing. I just, you know, if something catastrophic happens and the whole crop is lost, that's where I have an issue, a concern.
So if, essentially, I mean, hearing some of the concerns from the board, are you saying that perhaps having this set as the default, but leaving open some door, or through
Act of God?
Some sort of, if someone can truly document some sort of unusual scenario, much in the way that for property tax, we have a penalty waiver. But that typically involves, if you miss a deadline, you show, I was in a car accident, I couldn't, you know, I couldn't leave the hospital, or I was so sick, I was bedridden, and you have documentation to support that. That's how we've done it. But simply changing your mind later?
Right.
Just because you decided not to wouldn't work? I mean, or is that the kind of standard we're talking about?
Right, because it can be just easy enough where that becomes the default.
We could consider language that would leave some door open for more unusual, extreme changes, something to the effect where something happened beyond someone's control. I think some of the circumstances Supervisor Green brought up would be an example of some sort of unusual circumstance, like a complete ownership change in the middle of the season. We could try to craft language, probably lean on county council for some assistance there. If there's something that could leave that door open, would that satisfy concerns here?
Ownership change in the middle of the season, what do you mean by that?
So I, there's a few different things that could happen here, I think, is that perhaps if there's a change with the, in the ownership of the land, if one company were to leave in the middle and another company were to take over due to some sort of unexpected circumstance, I can't even really think of what it would be, but...
No, I know. But that's what I bring up, because there is instances where it's a transactional deal to, for someone from a different area to come in, a business to come in and kind of take advantage, and then put something in that says, oh, you know, they're going back and forth with if they want to submit in June or not. And there is entities out there that take advantage of the situation we're in as of right now. So for me, I'm fine with it the way it is, but if we all want to make different changes, I mean, I will entertain them, if you will.
Supervisor Simon?
I just want to speak on the issue of just getting the date set, you know, for the June 1st. I'm in favor of moving forward with it the way it's presented today. There's always going to be issues, what if, what if, what if comes up. But we've had cultivators stand right here and say they're ordering the plants early March, April, right, you know, we got to, we got to get these ordered from the nursery to get to us, to Gooz things. So they should know by this time right now, or even a little earlier than what we're talking about, by June 1st, of what's going to be happening this year. I understand the catastrophic incidents, but if it's going to be a large thing like that, probably something else happened in the county that would be at this board, and we'd be having a conversation on it. So I'm good with moving forward the way it's proposed today with the June 1st deadline.
I think that, I think, I mean, I think there's ways to lose an entire crop and not have something affect the entire county. Though that's, I still do have some concern there. And I don't know, it sounds like you have some policies or property taxes, like being in a car accident, or something that can be documented, because that's going to require some additional time for an inspection to come in.
So I mean, in the past, I mean, you guys are aware that we've always worked with the cultivators. So I don't see that that would be an issue going forward. The thing with this June 1st date, you know, I've been here since the beginning, I was, had to implement this program, and that has been the difficulty, is every time we send out the tax bill, we get all these calls saying they're wrong, right? And so if we do something like this, and people file the paperwork that they need to file, and then there is a situation like this, I don't see why we couldn't come back to your board and say, this has come up, this is something, you know, and work with it. You know, but for the most part, you know, if we can get a said date, it will definitely help us in making this process more efficient for our department. Just because over the years, this has been the one thing I've had to deal with, it has never been consistent, and it's always been the tax bills. You know, we try our best, you know, with what we have, but I think if we can have this date and then still be able to have that conversation later with, you know, certain circumstances, you know, we've always worked with them. You know, we've never been, I don't think our county's ever been really difficult with cultivators and said, absolutely not, we will not work with you. I really do not feel that's ever been the case with this.
Okay, thank you, Liz, I appreciate that.
And I know one example, I think it was the LNU fire that burned down a couple out in the Jerusalem Valley area. And I think that you guys worked with the operators out there and did something. I know the state also offered some funds. So I think catastrophic situations are going to be dealt with on a case-by-case basis. So just wanted to bring out that example, that I've seen you guys do that kind of work to make sure it works with the cultivators. I want to open it up for, Supervisor Green?
Yeah, just, just I want to pick up on your comments. I do agree, the basic concept, I do believe Measure C links the cultivation activity, the actual cultivation, and that, on that basis, is where the tax becomes due and payable. So the opt-outs, the reductions, all that, all that makes perfect sense to me. That said, Measure C didn't provide us in the appeal process and something like that. I think we have authority to craft one, but that's not before us today. So I want to acknowledge your comments. I totally agree. This one-and-done deadline, I think, probably is a reasonable approach for today. But just these what-if discussions, as Supervisor Simon was saying, there's enough of them, and they're complex enough, that just to keep our imposition of these taxes legally defensible and make sure we're only taxing cultivation that's actually happening, that's an important core concept. It is challenging, because again, it isn't up to the treasure tax collector to inspect farms and make sure they're doing what they're saying. CDD has struggled in years past, they got most of their inspections, if not all the inspections, done last year. But again, they're there to ensure compliance with the ordinance and the conditions of approval of the use permit, not to do math for another department. So it just highlights to me that we don't have a cannabis program per se that spans departments, and even our cannabis permit program, such as it was under CDD, is kind of morphed with the removal of that managerial position. So I just want to acknowledge the difficulty of your job. I understand why you're bringing this forward, and I understand that CDD on their side also probably has some ongoing difficulties monitoring and managing what's going on on the ground any given growing season. But I think what before us is today is reasonable, and I think those longer discussions we can have another day with a different item.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Let's open it up for the public. Anyone wish to speak on this item? If you don't, actually, go for it, I already opened up public comment.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Hello there. Good afternoon, members of the Board of Supervisors, staff. Nora Dalbaka, President of the Lake County Cannabis Alliance, and thanks for, as always, being a little proactive here for us. June 1st, generally cultivators will know by June 1 what they're planning to cultivate. The state has made some changes in the last year or two for folks looking to do reduction in their, in their, in their footprint or their cultivation area or their number of plants. Some of the things that can happen, though, that, you know, wouldn't be, wouldn't coincide with a, with a natural disaster in the area or something like that, we've got hops-laiten virus that's going all, going around all over the state. You don't know that your crop, or how much of your crop, would have hops-laiten virus until much later in the growing season, when the plant starts to exhibit the symptoms of that, that particular disease. You could also have mold failure for, or testing failure for a crop. So that would be once you're harvested and you send it out for testing, that could happen from pesticide drift, from an adjacent, an adjacent agricultural use that comes and taints your crop. All of those things may not be visible until they arrive at the, at the testing facility. So I do think that, I hope that we wouldn't have those kinds of things come up, because I hope for our cultivators that that wouldn't happen. But that is the kind of thing that could, that could fail a crop and, or a whole section of a crop. A way to track that, though, that would be something that would be reported to the California Track and Trace System, because that would also need to be reported to them, because the cannabis would need to be destroyed at that point. So that, I would love to have us come back and, if there are issues. And a way to potentially mitigate this would be something we've talked about for a long time, which I know requires a whole other policy side, which is to go to a gross receipts tax. And I see Patrick laughing, because he knew I was going to say that. And that is, that would be all based and trackable and traceable in the Track and Trace System. You can see what people sold, how much was sold, and it would be verifiable under, under a state system that would be under penalty of breaking state law. So that, that is one way to look at that in the future, but I do understand the need for the, the need for the county to have a good number, and for the understanding that the county is understaffed at the moment. And I think we've got some folks that are going to talk on Zoom as well. So I'm here if you've got other questions.
Thank you very much. I'm going to pause on the public comment real quick. Didn't realize that our director from community development has her hand up, Mariaa Turner. Want to give you a chance to speak.
Thank you. The community development department is in support of setting a deadline for opt-out and reduced canopy notifications. The June 1st date works out great, because it's just about when we're launching our annual compliance monitoring visits. And so we do use opt-out data or reduced canopy data, take that into consideration when we are doing our onsite visits. If somebody decides to opt out in their outdoor cultivation, we check that location via satellite, and may not do a visit out there if there doesn't look like there's any activity. Though with mixed light and indoor, we will still do a site visit just to confirm that, because we can't verify it through satellite. Yeah, so this timeline works fine with us. A change in ownership, which the board discussed earlier, is actually basically an administrative change. It doesn't have any repercussions on our side, though, Patrick, it may cause more staff time to make those updates on his side. So anyway, yeah, CDD thinks that it would actually be very helpful if we could know by June 1st what people are planning to do for that year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, I'm going to open it back to public comment. Still in the chamber, is there anyone in the chamber that wishes to speak?
Michael Wagner, thank you, board, and Patrick, again. I absolutely understand Patrick's frustration with what goes on. And I think for all of us, as we've worked through all these different issues over however many years we've been doing this, we're kind of getting into the knits, like the small, finite points that are important. I think Bruno and Mr. Green have made a very good point, which is the law itself, which was a voter initiative, is based on cultivation itself. So I think that the specific around the Cultivation Act is where we can enforce taxable. A gross receipts is not, again, even within that law or that construct. So based on what they cultivate is absolutely important for us to be able to collect those taxes and not have any kind of ramifications or issues. With that, setting a deadline for when that has to be notified or put forward is absolutely reasonable. That date of June 1st has been working relatively well for us. With that, having some way to amend that information, just like you were filing your income taxes, would seem reasonable as well. Not with... Not withstanding some, you know, crazy catastrophe, like your crop burns down. The reality is if you cultivate, you owe the, owe the tax, okay? Pesticides, it burns down, it doesn't really matter. If you cultivated that square footage, you were on the hook for that. Now, if you didn't cultivate it, then you're not. And I think that's an important distinction here. So having an amendment process or some way to modify it. We have talked about, well, you start in June and you know what you're going to do, right? Well, heck, I start at 9:00 AM and I think I know what I'm going to do, right? But by noon, my, you know, things happen. And, and the presumption that everybody runs on the same schedule, right? Especially in the cannabis arena, there's funding issues, you know? You expect to get money, let's say from a sale to a distribution company, but that money doesn't come till July, right? I'm not saying that you shouldn't be able to at least put forward what you expect to do, but having some way to adjust that based on circumstances that are not necessarily life threatening would again, seem reasonable. This is about business and businesses have issues and, and changes happen. With that, I, I do think that what Patrick is asking for is absolutely reasonable. And with that, if we make a pathway to deal with the unknowns, I think that, again, now we're, you know, taking care of both sides of the scenario. With that, Patrick is talking about basically the ability to trust people when they write stuff down. And he wants some kind of, I think culpability, you know, to hold people responsible for what they say. And while I understand what he's saying, I think that we already have those things in law. Defrauding the county is illegal no matter what.
Thank you for your comments. I believe we have a hand up in Zoom if we can unmute.
Hi, this is Erin McCarrick in Clear Lake. Thanks for this, this proposal to allow farms to reduce canopy or opt out if needed. I did have a question for Patrick. We spoke a couple months ago, I have a question and then a couple comments. But the question is, is if they, the tax department or CDD looked into when the state's deadline is to opt out or reduce. Last year, as Nora mentioned, they changed some laws that allowed cultivation, cultivators to reduce their canopy or opt out. So I'm just wondering if they found out what that deadline was and if it coincides because that would be the easiest way to do it, to give cultivators one deadline. I'm not, personally, I don't know if this year's June 1 makes a lot of sense. It's March, it's March, it's May, it's May 14. That is not a lot of time to get this information out to cultivators unless it's already gone out or they've been given some sort of heads up. Another communication, you know, there's issues in communication. So I would maybe, maybe table this for a bit, but especially when there's just been some confusion about tax and tax bills and equity credits and all that type of stuff. So maybe next year is a better year to implement it. And also giving examples of how things can change. I just, I talked to a cultivator who was renting and his rent just defaulted. And so he's freaking out, this person is freaking out because they're wondering if they can opt out. So what if that happens in July? I guess just being clear about the extenuating circumstances. The state also has disaster relief ability that allows cultivators to file for disaster relief. So if there's any way to coincide with the state, that's always the best. As the CDD knows, as they're creating the cannabis ordinance that is trying to align with the state. Thank you for your time, thank you supervisors, thank you Chair Sabatier, and that's it.
Thank you for your comments. Just a clarification, don't we already have a deadline currently in place? This is not a new deadline?
That's, that's correct. We, we have previously used this June deadline and like-
You're just saying, we're serious this time.
That's, that was the intent with this, is that we're actually going to do what we formerly said we were going to do, which was to hold to it. To the point about the state process, we did look at that. It just, the state licensing process seems so different and we've changed our dates. We, we've changed our ordinance a lot, we've changed it so many times. I couldn't really figure out a way to marry them up and try to mirror the state's schedule. So I thought that was a really good idea, just in practicality. It's, at least as we're structured right now, it didn't seem viable. And I would just note, I mean, hearing, hearing everything that's been said, I, this ordinance does not currently have an appeals procedure. I think maybe there's value in having something like that so that there is that opportunity to provide additional documentation if there is some sort of unusual circumstance. So just throwing that out there, I mean, we're happy to work on that and bring that back regardless of whatever decision the board reaches today on this proposal.
Thank you very much. We have another hand up. Oh, it's still airing, okay. Did you have something more to say? Okay, thank you. So let's go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the board. Supervisor Green?
Question for Director Turner, if she's still with us.
Yes, she is.
The, I don't know what the form is titled, but it serves two purposes. One is to notify CDD of the footprint and what inspectors are going to see when they go out to the farm. The secondary purpose, and the one we're talking about here today, is to provide notice to the treasurer tax collector, the area, taxable area that is being cultivated this year. On that form, you know, who signs it? The owner, the landowner, is it signed under penalty of perjury? Is there tax notice language on there that makes clear that it, this form is a twofer? It's not only required for compliance with Article 27, but it's also required for compliance and calculation of cultivation tax due. And, and maybe if it's not super clear on that, maybe one takeaway from today would be kind of a meet and confer about the, the form of that form to make sure that when they sign it, we're not kidding, we're locking it in. And by the way, here's your, here's your site to this resolution we're going to pass and here's your site to Article 27. And it's very crystal clear that this is not just a compliance document for CDD, but it's a compliance document for the treasurer tax collector.
We'd be happy to do a meet and confer to sharpen up any language that's necessary for those forms. They've been used more as a departmental policy rather than something that was set out in Article 27. And so we're looking for the permatee signature as the owner of that permit to, to attest to a reduced canopy or an opting out. But we're happy to work with, with Patrick's office to make that a little more clear going forward, particularly if the board supports a resolution that tends to more formalize this process.
And then if you don't get a form back for whatever reason, is there a internal process to follow up with a, a letter or a certified letter? Any type of contact regime going on within CDD? So that if we're not getting these forms timely, we're not just going to sit waiting for the grower to come in panicking, oh, I didn't know? Because again, we-
No, we don't really chase after them to turn in the forms. We kind of leave it to them as business owners to let us know if they are cultivating other than their approved use permit.
Thank you.
But then when we do get that information, again, we use that as reference when we go out to verify our compliance monitoring site visits.
Do you have an estimate of just how good compliance is generally of our permateses? How many, how many are timely filing? And again, nothing, nothing needs to get filed if they're-
Supervisor, Supervisor Green, I asked a similar question. About half of them submit late filings, is what I got from Mr. Sullivan.
No, my, my reference was, I think, two reductions.
Oh, that half of them do reductions, gotcha.
It appeared to us that approximately half the bills were being adjusted. But I, I can't speak to how many of those forms were filed timely or not.
Gotcha.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't have that information offhand. But I'd be happy to text my staff and let you know.
I'm definitely in favor of moving this resolution today, but it does sound like there's some follow up, follow up work that could be done departmentally to clarify the notice to the growers. And as far as appeals and stuff like that, that's a longer term discussion we can have later.
We could also set up an annual notification, say in February, just reminding people. And I, I think we have done that on a small scale informally, just reminding people that, that your opt out or your reduced canopy will be due by June 1.
Okay, thank you for those questions. And just to reiterate, this is a use permit, not a mandate to take on certain activities. If we had a similar situation with, say, a dispensary, just to at least try to do an apples to apples, because there is really no other apple out there to compare this to, that this is part of our problem throughout the state as we see different agencies trying to navigate through this system as well, or different counties trying to navigate through this tax system as well. But if we have a use permit for a dispensary and they went on their use permit, say they'd be open Monday through Fridays, we don't tax them if they decide to only be open on Mondays. We only tax them on the activities that happen within their, their, their transactions, which obviously is where this is not an apple to apple because this is based on an actual tax, sales tax, not a, a square footage tax. But if somebody decides that this year they're, they're late, maybe their supply chain created an issue where they couldn't do anything, the inability to change it after June 1 and taxing somebody on an activity that we have no right to mandate that they do is where I just struggle that we are taxing somebody in a way that just does not seem appropriate, which is where I would prefer to head towards a fine or a penalty for late filing and changes to ensure that we are taxing appropriately and trying to keep you whole in your department. Because I just see no other way to do this the right, the correct way. Because we can't mandate somebody to do specific type of work. Their use permit is a permit to be allowed to do the work. But as far as the level of work that they do and how it changes throughout the year, should, we should be able to find a way to do this. And the, the elephant in the room was brought up about gross receipts. Definitely another elephant to try to take one bite out at a time to try to make that happen. But that would solve so many of the problems, both in the how much to tax them and what are you doing this year? It would be based on actual transactions. So I think that this is complicated, there's no easy way to go through it. But I just wanted to express and explain again why today I will be voting no on this just because I feel very uncomfortable about taxing anybody, no matter what, for things that should not be taxed. Looking for action?
I'll offer the resolution.
Resolution has been offered.
All right, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Green?
Aye.
Supervisor Pisca?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Nay. All right, thank you very much. That leaves us with our weekly calendars. Who would like to begin?
I'll go first, finish up the meeting today. I know we got closed session stuff happening this afternoon. And then LAFCO, tomorrow is really interesting. So I have LAFCO, but we also have a special APC board meeting at the same time. So I'm going to split time with you, I think, start with LAFCO and then go in the same building too. Also, I don't know how that's all going to happen.
It's supposed to be done before the other one starts.
Yeah, so we'll see.
Supposed to.
Yeah, well, hopefully all timing works out. Then we also have our Eva meeting tomorrow at 1:00, 1:00 PM in the same building. So we're all in City of Clear Lake tomorrow. Thursday, don't have anything this time on the books, CAO. On Friday morning, this Saturday, there's the annual Chili Cookoff fundraiser, the large fundraiser for the Middletown Senior Center. Judge and chili and some salsa, I think on that in the afternoon. And then on Monday, I'm going to go out to the GI, the PG&E landfill, the GI site down in Middletown, the high school goes out there every year. So I'll go out there in the morning for a little while there. And then in the afternoon, here in the courthouse, we have the regular scheduled Risk Reduction Authority meeting and then back here on Tuesday.
Thank you very much. Who's next?
Okay.
Vice Chair Crandall?
So tomorrow, I'll finish the meeting today, of course, RCRC. I'm heading there in the morning and I'll be there until Friday when I have the RCRC Golden State Finance and Golden State Connect meeting. In between, there's the Blue Ribbon Committee, but Supervisor Green's going to attend that. Right, yes, I think we agreed to that. Then Friday evening, I'm going to rush back because there is the Bloody Island Sunrise Ceremony. And it's held at, at the Robinson Ranchery Cultural Area. There's a 6:00 PM dinner and traditional dancing and everybody is invited. In, on Saturday, May 18th at 5:00 AM, there's commonly a walk from the cultural area to Bloody Island. But if you don't want to go to the walk, you can just meet at the actual Bloody Island. It's not the, it's not the monument on the highway, it's the monument that's right by the island, the old one that still says battle. But that's the one that, that we do the sunrise ceremony at. So you can meet there on Saturday morning at 6:00 AM. Monday, I'll have the CAO meeting. And then I will be at the Lucerne Alpine Senior Center. They're doing a ribbon cutting for the ADA project that was finished and it's intact now. So I'm then back here next Tuesday.
Awesome, thank you. Supervisor Pisca?
Well, I just got an email from the RCD that Tara and the RCD received $7.3 million in mitigation funds through the CWDG and Clerk and Sailor Springs Community Redevelopment Association were also awarded, which is over $15 million coming into Lake County, which is 20% of all the funding coming into the state.
Wow.
Yeah, that's why I booked you. So tomorrow I have, I'm going to the Workforce Alliance Advisory Committee. I have the monthly NCO meeting with Home Partnering, but I'm not sure I can make that because I have lunch with a constituent and then I have to go to the Kelseyville Cemetery. And then I have the Big Valley Advisory Committee. And then Thursday, I've got the Cowberry Council meeting in the evening. Friday is the, the BAS update with the Zona Benefit. And then I will spend another weekend out at Six Sigma Ranch for the bike races. Monday, I've got the RA meeting and then back on Tuesday.
Thank you.
And thank you. Tomorrow morning, our biweekly Zoom regarding operations at the Lakeport Emergency Shelter. Looks like Lake County Children's Council in the afternoon. Thursday, definitely going to be attending Blue Ribbon Commission at Lakeport City Hall. IFT, I show at 9:00, but I also see a COC meeting, I don't, I'm not sure if that's accurate. Is there COC on Thursday? And while we're checking on that-
Strategic planning, not, not-
Not general membership, okay, great. Thank you for sharing the information about the Bloody Island commemorations. I may follow up and try to pry some additional information out of you, Supervisor Crandall. Do hope to attend. And, and then coming back Monday, a meeting with CAO Parker. And just a heads up, next week I will be going to Eureka on the 23rd for North Coast EMS. And I think I need coverage for something, but I'm not quite sure. And that's it.
All right, thank you very much. This afternoon, once our meeting is finished, I do need to follow up with a phone call with our local NAACP. Tomorrow, as Supervisor Simon mentioned, it is a bit of a hectic schedule as we have an overlapping LAFCO and APC meeting, so we'll see how that goes. In the midst of that, there should be a raising of the flag in Austin Park as well. We'll watch it from City Hall through the windows that don't exist. And also I have a 12 o'clock meeting with the NACO Leadership Conference with Economic Mobility. So I'll see if I can still make that depending on if we're done with APC or not. Only to jump right back into an AVA meeting. So it should be a very active day, we'll see if we have time for lunch sometime. We have, looks like there's an IFT meeting at 9:00 AM.
IFT only, no EMCC.
Yeah, and so I'll be taking part in that. Law Library Meeting on Thursday as well. And then Strategic Planning with the Lake County Continuum of Care. Finish that up with a Clear Lake City Council meeting on that evening. And Friday, right now, I'm fairly wide open, but I will be meeting with CC4C, Citizens Caring for Clear Lake, just to get an update on some of the work that they've been doing with the city as well, some of the work that they've been doing with the county on the beautification process and other things like that. The 18th, I do plan on being at the sunrise ceremony, I believe it's 5:00 AM, is that correct?
That's in the morning. And I forgot to mention that to get to the cultural area, the same road that came before us and I had to recuse myself for, that's the road you take to get there.
Gotcha.
So I don't know if the gate will be open or whatever the case might be.
Find out. Find out.
Or if you need, it has been open, but just letting you know, that's the road.
Hail Drive, is that?
Yes, and so that's how you get to that. And then everyone else should know, basically, the Reclamation Road is where you get to the actual rock itself.
Appreciate the information. On the 19th, I will be going to also a memorial for Robert DeWalt. We did a moment of silence for him not too long ago. Monday, I am going to meet with Supervisor Alejo and his staff from Monterey County. He is also the chair of the COC, so I'd like to pick him and his staff's brains on what they've been doing and accomplishing, because they've been getting quite a large sum of funding from the state, from other funding sources, and I want to make sure that we can tap into those if we can. Meeting with our CAO and preparing for our meeting on Tuesday. And that is it for me for next week's activities. And let me just call out our closed session. We have a long list. So 9.1, Public Employee Appointment Pursuant to Government Code, Section 54957B1, Interviews for Social Services Director, Appointment of Social Services Director. 9.2, Public Employee Appointment Pursuant to Government Code, Section 54957B1, Interviews for Water Resources Director, Appointment of Water Resources Director. 9.3, Public Employee Appointment Pursuant to Government Code, Section 54957B1, Interviews for Public Works Director, Appointment of Public Works Director. 9.4, Public Employee Appointment Pursuant to Government Code, Section 54957B1, Interviews for Special District Administrator, Appointment of Special District Administrator. 9.5, Public Employee Evaluation, Title Information Technology Director. 9.6, Evaluation of Child Support Services Director. And 9.7, Employee Evaluation of Animal Control Director. I do believe that we intend to go back to open session after our closed session, but we are going to take in our lunch, so we will reconvene at 1:45 p.m. for our closed session. Thank you for joining us. All right, welcome back, everyone. We've taken up 9.1 and 9.2, and, sorry, and 9.3 in closed session, and wanted to come out with action that has been taken. And Vice Chair Crandall?
Yes, there is action that needs to be taken. I move to appoint Rachel Dillman Parsons as Social Services Director effective May 15th, 2024, at $144,264 annually.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations and thank you. Next is 9.3.
I move to appoint Glenn March as Public Works Director effective June 3rd, 2024, at $155,168 annually.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Welcome to the team and moving forward. Thank you. And with that, we will go back to closed session. Thank you again for joining us, and we will not be coming out of closed session, or back to open session, once we are completed with our closed session. Have a good evening.